In accordance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, be advised that notice of this meeting was made by posting on the bulletin board in Town Hall and mailing to the officially designated newspapers a list of the meeting dates annually indicating that this meeting would take place on Wednesday, July 7th, 2021, at 7:30 PM via the Zoom platform. Due to the COVID-19 virus, Milburn Town Hall had been closed to the public for the purpose of board meetings. The notice was given containing information necessary for members of the public to attend the meeting through the Zoom platform, both by audio and or video means. The public will have the same opportunity to participate at appropriate time virtually, just as if they were attending an in-person meeting. This notice was posted on the Milburn Township website, Milburn Town Hall Bulletin Board and Milburn Town Hall front door, and was also forwarded to the Item and the Star Ledger, which publications are the official newspapers for the township of Milburn. Roll call.
Daniel Bear?
Here.
Gaston Halpert?
Here.
Jorge Mastro Pietro?
Yeah.
Mark Matzle?
Here.
Maggie Niggins?
Here.
Joseph Steinberg?
Here.
David Morrow? He was here. Where did he go? Did we lose him?
Must have lost him. Okay, well note, he's not here for right now, but if he comes back, we'll call it.
Okay. Shreenie Vijay?
Here.
Vice Chairwoman Miriam Salerno?
Yeah.
Chairwoman Beth Sol.
Here. Thank you. And sure, now, if we'd like to have Joe attest for the record, Mr. Steinberg, you were not here at our last meeting, but I believe you are making a statement that you have listened in full to our June meeting and are caught up to date on all application matters.
I will swear, I will swear, Mr. Steinberg in, if that's all right.
Okay, would Eric do that?
Well, I, I see him there, but he was on mute, so I figured I'd jump in, but
Okay.
I was certainly far.
I could do, I could do it if you'd like.
Thank you.
Do you swear from the testimony you are, you would give in today's Zoom hearing to be the truth, whole truth, not by the truth?
I do.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Steinberg.
I just want to say for the record that I was able through the website at the City Hall to view and hear the entirety of the last meeting that I was unable to attend.
Thank you. Please also let the record show David Morrow has joined us at 7:35 PM. David, are you there?
Yes, here, I'm having some computer sound issues.
Okay, are you able to hear us at this point? It seems like perhaps yes.
I am able to hear.
Okay, and if you are able to get your video on, that would be preferable, but we just are happy to have you participating as well. Thank you. Okay, our first item is the approval of minutes. Let's begin with February 24th, 2021. And Eileen, I just want to confirm because I believe we have five different sets of minutes that have been circulated.
Very busy, yes.
Yeah, we've been busy. You've been busy, but only two of which are listed on the, the agenda that was circulated. Should I?
No, I did revise the agenda to include all five, but if we could do all five, that would be great.
Okay. So let's begin with 2/24/21, which is the, the oldest of the sets of minutes. And we have that in, present for that meeting where Daniel Bear, Gaston Halpert, Jorge, Mastro Pietro, Mark Matzle, Maggie Niggins, Joe Steinberg, Sanjeev Venayak, David Morrow, Shreenie Vijay, Miriam Salerno, and myself.
I move the adoption of the minutes.
Thank you. I second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Recuse on those.
And Maggie recused because you did not stay for that meeting. That's fine. Thank you. Okay, meeting minutes of February 24th, 2021, pass. The next set of meeting minutes we have is March 3rd, 2021. It does read 31 on the agenda, but it's 2021. We're not living in the future yet. Okay, so anybody who was present at that meeting, if you have the meeting minutes, Mr. Bear, Mr. Halpert, Mr. Mastro Pietro, Mr. Matzle, Ms. Niggins was there until accusing, I believe, Mr. Steinberg, Mr. Venayak, Mr. Vijay, Ms. Salerno, myself. There were no, okay, and that was, yes, regarding the 1/21 slope drive. Did anybody have any further comments, corrections, or make a motion to approve?
Make the motion.
Thank you, Jorge.
I'll second.
All in favor, approving?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? And any recusals? I don't, I think.
I think I was on that one.
You were on that one, as I was gonna say. All right, meeting minutes from March 3rd, 2021, approved. Okay, the next that I have is March 31st, 2021. We also received in the, the second batch of meeting minutes. The same suspects were all there. It looks like everybody has been having good attendance. I think all the same names were present, so any corrections, concerns?
Beth, what was that, on that?
This was the Beehive. Memorialization, the resolution was memorialized in that one. And then, as well as the Advanced Accelerator, we had, we adopted that memorialization. And then, in the CB slope. It's in all these, so those are the, it's, it was a set of 32 pages of
And it was the 85 Woodland, so Maggie didn't.
And 85 Woodland isn't there as well, so Maggie, you would recuse on that one, on that particular matter. Yes, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Does anybody make a motion to approve the minutes of March 31st, 2021?
I have to accuse on the the AAA.
The Advanced Accelerator, yes. I think you didn't vote on that because all that's included in the minutes is memorialization.
Right, and I didn't, I did not review those minutes.
That's fine. I will make a motion to approve the minutes of March 31st.
I'll second.
Miriam, seconds, all in favor?
Second. Aye.
Aye. Oh, thank you, Joe, we had a second already. But, but we consider that as your approval. Thank you. Any opposed? And then I believe we have a few recusals. Mr. Bear and Ms. Niggins are going to recuse from this one. Thank you. Okay, next set of minutes that we had to review was from April 7th this year. This was, we all discussed, we discussed again, the 85 Woodland Chatham. And that was the only application that was discussed at that meeting, and this is, this is the minutes of that discussion. It's not the memorialization of the, of the application. And, and Maggie did recuse on that one as well. Anybody want to make a motion to approve these minutes from the April 7th meeting?
I can, I can make a motion.
Thank you, that was Shreenie?
Yep.
A second? Miriam? Great, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And we'll have a recusal from Ms. Niggins again. And for the fifth and final set of minutes is the April 28th, when again, we discussed application 2000785 Woodland Road. We discussed that, and that was the only item on the agenda at that meeting because it got carried one more time.
And I just noticed that I don't have Maggie Niggins recuse, so I will put that in there before.
And we do want to note, yeah, usually you have it right up at the top. Thank you. Great. I will make a motion to approve the minutes from Wednesday, April 28th.
We'll second again.
Thank you, Miriam. All in favor of approving the minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And we'll have a recusal from Ms. Niggins. Okay, thank you. That is all matters of moving through the that part of the agenda. Thank you for bearing with us. Sorry, just posing a few windows down. Okay, our next item of business, actually, I would propose that we switch the order as they appear. I, I think we should finish the business that was continued from our last one, which is the matter of the referral of the historic landmark for the planning board report or recommendations. And before we jump into that, I will say, you know, I think last month's meeting, I think everybody came at it from the right place. I would just like to say, for the record and for our own process, I think it was a learning lesson. As if we were in person in the world in a meeting, we wouldn't be whipping out our phones or our, and texting and calling. I think it all came from a good place of just wanting to get the information. I think what we learned is those who are present at the meeting are present. If we don't have the, you know, answer and we feel we need it, then we will table it for the future and seek to get those answers, which is ultimately how it worked out, but I think that will serve all of us better. So lesson learned on my part, and thank you all for being part of that process and for giving us the road bumps along the way. So that said, it lists on the agenda all three of the resolutions, but I believe we have already resolved two of them or addressed the two of them. Is it 21153 that was the Hessian House?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So let's focus on that one item as an order of business. If anybody was not here last meeting, Ed, I will ask you, are they allowed to participate if we have the discussion now? Or do they need to have been part of the discussion that we had, given we're not voting on anything, but we're making a recommendation?
I think that they need to have, if they have, were not at the meeting, they need to have reviewed the minutes just as we were when they hear it. I think to do otherwise would really be unfair to the rest of the board.
I appreciate that, okay. Your volume is very low for me. I don't know if that's true for everybody else. If there's a way, speak up or turn it up. Thank you. And then, I believe that applies to Miriam.
Yeah.
You, and did you watch it in full or not?
Nope, I didn't, sorry.
That's okay, so.
Busy few weeks, so I will just hang here and wait for the application and then I'll chime in.
Perfect. I think, I think that's appropriate. Ed, does she need to be out of the room, as it were, or she just should not participate?
No, no, she should just not participate.
Okay, thank you. And is anybody else not there? Now, Joe, attested to having listened to it in full, and I don't think anybody else. Mark, were you able, were you at the last meeting? Yes, okay, I'm sorry. I remember there was one that you missed. Apologies. Okay. So all that said, I'm gonna allow Ed, if you would be so kind, to sort of preface it with a reminder of what our role is as the planning board tonight. And maybe that includes a refresher of how we concluded it last time with the other resolutions that were sent to us and what we are being asked to do, and then we can go from there.
Yes, thank you. The process, as I outlined at the, at the last meeting, is that once the recommendation is made and a report is issued from the Historic Preservation Commission to the Township Committee, the ordinance requires that the matter be referred to the planning board. The planning board has 60 days within which to issue a report to the Township Committee. And then the Township Committee can review that report, the report of the Historic Preservation Commission. They can approve, reject, or modify by ordinance those recommendations or determinations. And what this will result in is either the introduction, adoption of an ordinance that would declare the two that we recommended at the last meeting and however we come out with this one as historic landmarks, which we then carry with it a certain series of obligations that the owner of those properties would have to deal with, or the Township Committee will decide that they're not going to be historic landmarks and not introduce such an ordinance. The Historic Preservation Commission ordinance to which I am referring is vague on exactly what the planning board is supposed to do in its report. It merely says, as I just stated, the planning board shall report to the Township Committee. So it's, it's made the, it would seem to me that since a, either an historic district or an historic landmark becomes part of the ordinance and is also or will also, I would assume, be incorporated in our master plan, the historic preservation element of our master plan, that we ought to be looking at this from the perspective of whether or not the recommendations in the report made would be consistent with the master plan, the goals of the master plan, the historic preservation element. So that's really all I have to say, Madam Chair. I think the board can, you know, you have the reports, which were quite extensive from the HPC. We know the issues that arose last time. I believe there is someone from the Hessian House here tonight, both the attorney who was referred to in discussions that we had subsequently, and also the executive director. I just wanted to point that out for the chair.
Great, thank you. And so I think what we've uncovered, just to sort of resummarize that or tease out some of, I think, what's pertinent for us tonight. It's not our job as the planning board to, I guess, be concerned with the nitty gritty of, of necessarily who was informed and who wasn't informed and did they get it? But I think in doing our due diligence and being just concerned citizens in terms of understanding the implications of potential changes to, you know, zoning, which could result from this action, I think it helped us raise good questions and good concerns, which were, have the owners been made aware and what is their stance on it? That said, what our charge, I believe, is to do is to say, do we feel that the tenor and the, the resolution put before us is proposing to do something that, that we want, you know, encourage and support for Milburn Township? At which point, if the Township Committee chooses to move forward, they would give us an actual resolution for us to respond to and react to. They're looking for sort of the first, the nod or the, oh, we think you missed something, or how about this, consider this. So to that end, I think perhaps tonight and also maybe moving forward, I think we as the planning board could make the recommendation to the TC or to the HPC that we think it's important for them to have that dialogue with the owner, whatever that may be. So because I know there is representation, because they have been made aware now and maybe hadn't previously known, we can, I know you are present. If you want to use the raised hand function, if somebody wants to come, but I just want to make sure you, the owner of the property or the representatives of the owner of the property know that we are not here to this is not the hearing of, of the opportunity to change any language and anything because there isn't anything before us except a report stating, you know, the report that's publicly accessible, which you've had access to on the website. That said, because of how it unfolded last time, if there is anybody that does feel that there should be a comment made at this stage, given the context, I would welcome that. And I see that Gary Hall has raised his hand. Okay, Mr. Hall, you should be here in the room if you are able to unmute and turn your video on if it's possible. And you're not making a testimony, so you wouldn't be sworn in, but we welcome you to state your name for the record and, and introduce yourself.
Yes, thank you, and I do understand. I had a long, I talked with Mr. Booze.
Can I have you state your name for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry. Gary Hall, attorney with McCarter and English, representing the found, the Partnership for a Drug-Free New Jersey, which is the owner of the property of 155 Milburn Avenue.
Thank you.
And I was not here at the last meeting. Mr. Valente, who's also in the waiting room, I believe, was, was present, and I've spoken with him. And as I was starting to say, I had a conversation with Mr. Boozeck earlier today. He was very helpful. I understand you're not here to, this is not a hearing, you're not here to make findings, and I think, and it's all, you aptly said it already about the, but the Historic Preservation Commission, they're the ones that are supposed to have a hearing, and we actually thought they were gonna have a hearing, when it turned out our client didn't know about it, for whatever reason. But I was contacted yesterday by Mr. Brewer, the attorney assigned to the HPC. And he indicated that the HPC had determined not to have a hearing. I mean, they've said, you had it, we had a hearing, we sent it to you, and you didn't show up. Now, I don't know who's gonna, there's no need for you, and I'm not gonna get into what happened. I've been told by Mr. Valente that they checked with the post office, and there's no record of a notice being sent, but that's not your job. I agree, you don't, we're not gonna present testimony or findings on that, other than to represent to you that if they knew about it, if my client knew about it, someone would have gone to the HPC meeting. As I understand it, the planning board people last month were curious as to why no one was there, and actually, you know, we appreciate the fact that someone reached out to Mr. Valente and contacted him. He's the executive director of the partnership. So having said all that, I mean, the, the concern is, and it's more not, is the house historic or not? I read the, the report. I'm not gonna argue about that, but the question really is the fa, the partnership is a nonprofit. They, they do good deeds, I think, I hope, I presume. They were at the planning board, this board in 2007, to get a, and got approval to upgrade, renovate that building for their offices. As I understand, it was residential before, and actually, my firm handled that. I was involved, but someone else came to the planning board meeting. We have the, the, the minutes of that meeting, I haven't been gotten the resolution yet, but there was a commitment made and conditions that said you can't change the outside. And they have no problem with that. The, the client has no problem. There's no intention to change the building, to knock it down or, or expand it or change it. And there are conditions to that effect, as I understand it from the minutes, presumably they're in the resolution as well. And the, the concern is, first of all, I understand the other two sites that were on were, are owned by the township. And I'm not aware of any other site unless the ordinance is out of date that I got. These appear to be the first landmark designations. I know you've had to, to historic districts for quite a while. But the concern is why this, I mean, the history is, is very interesting. I read about it. But this is, the designation will impose a regulatory add-on burden to this nonprofit that if they want to do just about anything, if you look at the, the ordinance, it covers a whole lot of what I consider minor inconsequential things, but anything they want to do just about, they will need to apply for certificate, pay an application fee, pay an escrow fee, and because they're an entity, presumably they'll have to hire an attorney too, though actually, we, we're not, we represent them pro bono, so I guess that's not a, a factor. But certainly the values, the burden is, why is that burden on, on a nonprofit that's been owning and being a good steward of this property for the past 14 years? I mean, they're willing to, and, and those are not issues for you. I, I, what I'm asking, I guess, our request to the planning board is just that you ask someone to look at those issues. You don't have to make a judgment. You don't have to agree or not, but I think they, hopefully you will at least agree that they're legitimate items worthy of discussion, not, and frankly, when I heard the HPC didn't want to hear us, I was surprised because that, that's not very civic minded to me. I mean, why not? What's the problem? What's one month? You know, what's, what's troubling to me that they didn't even want to let us come in and hear hear anything. I mean, we'll present that to the Township Committee. They will have to have a, an, an ordinance, which requires a notice public hearing, but you'd rather, you know, air these issues beforehand, not at the, at the end of the process, so. That's really, I guess, Mr. Valente, I, I think you should hear from him as well, but that's really, that's really our request, and it's it's just, we'd like to have a conversation about why this is the first one through the chute, and it's, it's a burdensome process imposed on an entity which has a, a significant track record of preserving this property, and they're willing to, they, they have a condition that requires it, as I read it. So.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. I appreciate you coming on and saying that. Sure, if we want to allow Mr. Valente to speak for a few moments, also understanding what you said and, and the context of what we are doing.
Key is, we just have somebody to hear us, that's all. And I know you're the wrong one.
I appreciate that, yep. Okay, so that said, thank you, Mr. Hall. Have you returned as an attendee? And Mr. Valente, we would allow you to come in now. Hi there. You should be able to unmute yourself, and we should be able to see you. And if we can, Mr. Valente, if we can ask you to, again, just state your name, first and last name for the record. You're, I believe you're muted still. I don't know if you're able to unmute yourself. Mr. Valente, we're not hearing you. Oh, no. Gaston, did we end up having to have it go through your phone last time? I'm wondering if I'm remembering that now.
Last time, I, he's, he's on as a
Yeah.
Computer, yeah, he's got his name in there, and he was able to dial in as well.
Yeah, okay. Oh, it says now Mrs. Valente. Okay. Perhaps he's using another.
All right, let me.
Okay. Let's give that a try. Hello there. Are you able to hear us?
There we go.
Unmuted, I don't know if you can hear me.
Yes, we can hear you.
Although you could see me, but that's okay. First of all, thank you so much again for allowing us the opportunity to speak this evening, as you heard from Mr. Hall.
I'm sorry, can I just ask you to state your name for the record? I apologize.
Angelo Valente, Executive Director of the Partnership for a Drug-Free New Jersey. And we are the owners of 155 Milburn Avenue in Milburn. As Mr. Hall spoke about our commitment to the building and to the historical aspects of the building, we've been, we leave excellent storage of that building for many years, since we went before the planning board and have established it as our statewide headquarters. And we are candidly disappointed not being able to go before the historical group to be able to be heard on some, on a matter that has significant implications to our organization from a financial perspective in particular, which we are very concerned about because we rely on fundraising efforts in order for us to be able to provide all the programs that we have in the state of New Jersey, and we certainly would not want to see those monies diverted or used for purposes, which, you know, obviously, we don't believe we shouldn't. And we would, once again, reiterate our commitment to keeping the integrity of the building, as we did when we first applied to the city. And we certainly, again, appreciate the opportunity to be heard, at least in this forum, in this forum and in this meeting. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Valente. Appreciate it. Okay, so and I appreciate it. Thank you all to the, my fellow board members. I think it was helpful for us to, you know, get to hear and just get that question that was raised answered. So that said, we have that to take into account. I think we heard some potential suggestions, which might be if we decide to move forward on this application, given the report that we have from the HPC, the fact that they did follow due process, and they have, you know, the receipts to show that they did send certified mail. We also know, you know, the reality is, it didn't, you know, it didn't get through, and, and the, the app, the, the owners didn't hear. So that's outside of our control and purview. We may choose to support this or not, and I would love to hear everybody weigh in on this. And we may also choose to recommend to the TC that they, before, you know, moving forward and, and adopting a resolution, perhaps they, you know, have a meeting or meet with the HPC and choose to meet with the owner or not. We could, we can make a recommendation. They can choose to, you know, do with it what they will, but as the planning board, if we feel that we have an obligation in, in one way or the other, I think we can act on that in terms of our recommendation. So I open it up to everybody for, for some input, hopefully on all sides. So I open it up to everybody for, for some input, hopefully on all sides. Okay, does anybody want to take any action on this or propose any actions to take on this application?
Just for your information, and I failed to mention this earlier, although I, I did briefly, but not in full. The planning board has 60 days to act to make the report. If they do not make a report, the township committee can go forward in the manner of which I mentioned without any report from the planning board, so we are under a time constraint. And I think this is the last meeting before the 60 days expire, so if we're going to make any recommendation or issue the report, tonight is the night to do it, and if we fail to do it, we will not have an opportunity to do that in the future.
Thank you, and I appreciate the context.
To that, related to this application, obviously.
Yep.
Go ahead, Gaston.
So I, I guess the two things that, that I'm weighing is, one, it's part of the master plan that we do try and recommend certain properties become historical landmarks. In this case, though, one of the landmarks definitely has not been heard. Or their owners of the, the landmark had not been heard. So i- is it just possible to, I mean, that's what we're gonna report, because to me, I don't think there's any other way to look at it. And we can't make a decision at all, I don't know if it's our job to make a decision, but to me, that's, that's the way it should go. We report that, yes, it, it is a historical landmark, but no, if you haven't talked to the owners, then I don't think that's good for the township, you know, but having heard what Dan has said previously, you know, I don't think it's, yes, it was, be good for a resident either, you know. So anyway, that's where I stand.
Thank you, and I guess I would also add, while I agree that I think they have very likely been great stewards of the property and, and they did, you know, commit to not changing things, ownership does change, but if you do receive a designation, the landmark, you know, that's I believe in perpetuity, so it would, it would guarantee that that home never is, or property is never purchased and used and changed beyond, you know, the, the rules and, and permissions of, of a historic designation. So it's sort of, and I think that was the intent of the HPC, if I interpreted that correctly from their report, just looking, you know, to protect it. Okay. Any other thoughts, Jorge?
No, I, I want to say a little word, Gaston said, our master plans has said that we, we, we should incorporate this new, old buildings, non-new buildings, old buildings into the historic landmark. And if the Historic Preservation Commission suggested, we should follow what they, what they are doing, because they are the experts. So I, they should follow all the, sending the letters, everything that we said, so I, I'm in favor of this. And if the Historic Preservation Commission bring this to us, I will, I, I will accept this.
Right. Do you have any hesitation if we were to propose that the township committee do coordinate with the owner or hear them?
Of course they should, they should, of course, that's, that's the.
I think we're hearing a few people, but, you know, I just wanna make sure if there's consensus on that, a comfort on your part. Okay.
Beth, I, I do see that Angelo Valente has his hand raised, I don't know if, I just wanted to let you know.
I appreciate that, I prefer to just keep this as just our, our board dialogue, because we, we are deliberation. I think we offered an opportunity to hear from their attorney and, and Mr. Valente, but yeah, I think I'll say, and just so you hear it for, for now, I think we're just gonna keep this as a board discussion as we proceed, but, but thank you for your comments thus far. Okay, so. I'm gonna propose something and then hopefully we can have some discussion or, or we can make a motion and move it, but I believe you know, the few members who have participated and I'm seeing some nods, but I would love any more feedback. I believe that we as the planning board support what is proposed by the HPC, we're listening to our Historical Preservation Commission, which has taken the time and effort to do the research and presented a very well researched and thought-through proposal rationalizing why this property is appropriate. But I would also like to recommend to our township committee that they coordinate both with HPC and the owners before or as they are in the process of drafting any resolutions, just to make sure all parties are informed and at the table at that time. Again, we're not requiring it, but I think we can recommend it as the planning board. Does anybody have any thoughts or tweaks or challenges to that? Okay. So I will make a motion to take that action and make a recommendation, so Eileen, then you would then draft the report on behalf of the board to support Resolution 21153, but also make a recommendation as stated that there'd be coordination with the owners directly.
I stick on that.
Thank you, Jorge, and then I believe we did a roll call vote?
Yes, I think we should do that.
Daniel Bear?
Thank.
I'm sorry?
abstain.
Gaston Halpert?
Let's say, yes.
Jorge Mestre Pietro?
Yes.
Mark Matzle?
Yes.
Maggie Miggins?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes.
David Morrow?
Yes.
Miriam Salerno, no, Miriam's not voting, Shreeni Vijay?
Yes.
That's all.
Yes. Okay, thank you, so that addresses 21153. Eileen, I don't know when our 45 days, 60 days expires?
I'll make sure she gets it tomorrow.
Thank you so much, I appreciate that, okay. Thank you, Mr. Valente and Mr. Hall for participating as well. We're gonna move on to our application, our one application for the evening, 21003 for preliminary and final site plan approval, 275 Company Inc. So I believe we'll bring in their attorney, is that Mr. Stewart? Hello, good evening, if you folks are just joining us can turn on cameras and at least your counsel should be unmuted so we can have you introduced.
Okay, so I think you can hear me, but I don't think you can see me.
That is accurate.
All right, so how do I do this, let's see.
I don't know.
Laura, yeah, the thing, the little thing that looks like the video. If you hover your mouse on the screen.
How's that?
There we go, good evening.
Good evening, thank God you can hear and see me, as many times as I do this, I'm always so afraid I'm gonna screw up somehow, but I'm here and that's good.
Great, can we have you introduce yourself?
Absolutely, Richard Stewart from the law firm of Lasser-Hockman, and I'm here this evening on behalf of 275 Company Inc. 275 Company Inc. owns the property at 275 Milburn Avenue. That is the location of the longstanding Footnotes commercial building. The applicant is proposing or seeking major preliminary and final site plan approval to construct a two-story addition to the building, which would consist of four residential apartments. The applicant also seeks certain variances and waivers in connection with the application. I have with me this evening, Michael Lanza Fama from Casey and Keller, that's the project engineer. Mr. Lanza Fama will present both engineering testimony and planning testimony. And I also have with me John Buckholz from Buckholz Architects. And lastly, I, I have principals and representatives of the, the property owner to answer any questions which the board may have or to fill in any details that Mr. Lanza Fama and Mr. Buckholz are unable to, to provide. So that being said, I would like to, to, to start by calling Michael Lanza Fama of Casey and Keller to testify.
Good evening, Mr. Lanza Fama.
Do you swear from testimony you're about to give in today's Zoom hearing for the truth, hold three times for the truth?
I do, my name is Michael Lonza Fama. I'm a civil engineer licensed in the state of New Jersey. I hold a bachelor's science degree in civil and environmental engineering from New Jersey Institute of Technology. Registered as a professional engineer, land surveyor and planner. I appeared before this board on numerous occasions. My firm is located at 258 Main Street, Milburn, New Jersey.
I would, I would ask that the board recognize Mr. Lanza Fama as an expert in both the field of engineering and planning?
Thank you, we will hear him as an expert in engineering and planning.
Thank you. Mr. Lanza Fama, can you describe to the board what the applicant is proposing here this evening?
Yes, certainly. One of the elements which I think we need to address head-on first is the fact that this application is seeking a waiver of the environmental impact statement, and I believe it's been the board's policy in the past to, to act on that request prior to beginning the entire application.
I do appreciate that, yes, if you'd like to provide any testimony to that.
I would, I would. The property in question, as Mr. Stewart pointed out, is 275 Milburn Avenue. I think almost everybody here should know where the footnote Chu Star has been operating for decades within the community. The property is a relatively small parcel of land, approximately 15 feet wide by 186 feet deep with frontage on both Milburn Avenue and Essex Street. It's a little over 9,300 square feet in size. And basically, the entire property is covered by building and/or pavement. Our proposal is to simply rework the existing building by providing a small addition to the rear to provide for lobby area for the residential apartments to be constructed on top of the existing structure. So we're, we're adding two stories of apartments, so from an environmental perspective, the property is not located in a flood hazard area. There's obviously no wetlands or steep slopes that need to be considered, no critical environmental issues that need to be addressed. And so, in, in my opinion, the granting of the waiver for the environmental impact statement would be appropriate in this particular application. I'd like to point out that the site pitches basically from Essex Street down to Milburn Avenue. And there is a drywell system that collects runoff from the parking area and the roof at which has been functioning extremely well, even in light of the recent rains we've had. And our proposal is to enhance that system by increasing the available storage capacity underground and allowing for groundwater recharge by storing the full volume of runoff that would be generated by the roof and the paved parking area for both the two and 10-year storms. So I, I think in this particular case, as I've said before, I think the environmental impact statement waiver should be granted and is appropriate. I'd be happy to answer any questions the board members might have.
Thank you, Mr. Lonza Fama, did anybody have any questions regarding Mr. Lonza Fama's testimony?
I have just one.
Go ahead, Joe.
You said there were no steep slopes on this property, but the property does slope from Essex Street down to Milburn Avenue. What is the degree of that slope, do you know?
The, the overall grade change from Essex Street to Milburn Avenue is approximately five feet, over 186 feet. So that would average out to be about a two and a half percent slope. Handicap access is 2%, so I would not classify that as a steep slope.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Gaston?
I know you just testified that the drywell works very well. I think the township engineer had requested that a percolation test be done, has that been done?
It, it has not been done as of yet. We've been monitoring the existing system that's there and it's working very well. However, we will perform the necessary testing as Ms. Callahan has requested prior to any installation.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, other questions, Jorge?
Yeah, and no, we, we always keep hearing here in the planning board, the waiver for the environmental impact statement. And many times, of course, is, of course, we, they don't need to present an environmental impact statement, because sometimes it's an interior renovation, sometimes something very small, whatever. But the, the environmental impact statement usually is, is something that is recognized as a method to investigate the impact of the development. And always there is an impact on the environment, always, we cannot deny that, there is an impact here, even though there is an existing building, it's one story. Now we are bringing two more stories, which is great, I think it's great, we need to bring these developments in our downtown, so I'm not against that. But I would like to, to have this, this paper that is prepared to tell us, planning board, what are those impacts in this section? I, we shouldn't be getting all this waiver all the time for every single development, that's my point of view. And I understand, I see why the reason that they are asking for the waiver, but still I feel that we should have something writing to explain to us all the impact that, and how this is going to, to resolve for this, a project, so that's my, 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 my point of view.
Sure, thank you Jorge for that comment, I, I guess I, I just wanna say, in our own defense as a board, we have required and actually even more recently, we've actually sent applicants back to ask them to complete more environmental impact statements, I wouldn't say we always just grant a waiver, but I appreciate the sentiment.
What I want to say is, we always require the waiver, everybody comes in front to, in front of us, asking for this waiver. And sometimes we said, no, and sometimes we say, yeah, that's fine.
Okay, thank you, that said, yeah, I guess, I don't know, Mr. Lonza Fama, if you wanted to respond to that, maybe talking about kind of what the, the categories that you would explore in the EIS would be?
Yeah, typically, what we're looking for is significant environmental impacts that would impact the community, obviously. Floor and fauna would not be issues here, you're looking at an urban site that's fully developed. Things that you might wanna look at is increased sewer and water demands, which would be minimal, you're only talking about four apartments. Typically, a two-bedroom apartment that we're proposing would, would generate approximately 225 gallons per day of sewer and would demand about 175 gallons per day of water demand. So, so neither one of those would, would even require any type of review or approval by the state. Since those volumes are well below the threshold of 8,000 gallons per day for a treatment works approval. As far as traffic demand or traffic generation, you know, for two-bedroom apartments, you're not gonna generate a significant amount of traffic. And you'll hear my testimony in support of our parking variance, the fact that the property is located in such close proximity to the train station that we don't anticipate a huge number of vehicles that the tenants would normally have. You know, there, there's other issues like electrical demand. You'll hear from Mr. Buckholz that, you know, energy-saving devices are being used and, and appliances will be specified. So there are a number of measures that are being taken in the development of the property that are cognizant of the potential environmental impacts. And I, I think I could say confidently that the impacts here are not gonna be significant. And this, in this particular case, and, and I personally, as you all know, was sent packing on another application where it was a similar scenario, however, it was a larger. However, it was a larger office building and parking expansion. And I was asked to prepare that environmental impact statement, and we did. However, we didn't get much feedback on it. But in fact, we did do that. But in this particular case, in my mind, it's clear that a waiver is appropriate.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any questions for Mr. Lanza Fama or?
I have one question.
Go ahead, Maggie.
Gaston, I talked about the percolation test, and you had said it hadn't been performed yet. When specifically do you plan on performing it?
If if the project is approved, we would do the perk test as part of the installation of the dry well system. The there is an existing dry well there now that's clearly can be clearly monitored. The parking lot is in a depression. There are no storm sewers available on Essex or Melbourne Avenue. However, the site has never flooded. The intense rains we had just the other night after I went there in the morning this morning, and the inlet was basically bone dry. So obviously, the system is working well now. We don't anticipate that that would change as a result of what we're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Gaston.
Follow up to Jorge's comment. Mr. Lanza Fama, can you comment on any increase or decrease in light pollution or heat island effect, like for instance roofing materials or where the signs will be placed? What what type of sign is it going to be upward lit or just anything like that?
No, there's not going to be any upward lighting. The lighting fixtures we're proposing are LED fixtures, energy efficient. We don't anticipate the roof area is only increasing by about 400 square feet. So you're you're not talking about creating a large heat sink that's going to add negatively to the environment. As a matter of fact, you know, technically, you're you're taking away a little bit of of what we now call parking impervious area that generates some pollutants and creating a greater building footprint, which creates a cleaner water source that goes in back into the ground. So I don't anticipate any significant impacts from either one of those elements.
Will, for instance, the color of the roof, I like it when they're white. Do you know, will it be just a black tall roof, or is this going to be?
I would have to defer to John. I I don't know for sure.
Okay. Any other questions related to the EIS? Mark, go ahead.
Mark, you're, yeah, you're. Yeah, I believe I read in the report that you're going to basically use white membrane for roofing. Is that consistent with the rest of the roof? Is the rest of the roof white membrane? And if not, is it possible to make that a white membrane roof?
As I said, I would have to defer to to Mr. Buckholz to respond to that.
I think, yeah, the architect will speak to that. Yeah. But thank you. I think we'll definitely hear some testimony about roofing. Appreciate that. Any other questions or comments in regard to the environmental impact statement waiver request? Okay. Does anybody make a motion to approve or require an environmental impact statement with regards to this application?
I'll make a motion to approve the waiver request.
We have a second. I will second.
Daniel Bear?
Yes.
Gaston Halpert?
Yes.
Jorge Mastro Pietro?
No.
Mark Matzel?
Yes.
Maggie Miggins?
No.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes.
David Morrow?
Yes.
Miriam Salerno?
Yes.
Beth Storm?
Yes. Okay, so motion passes to proceed with the application granting the EIS waiver request.
Thank you very much. Can I take command of the screen, Eileen?
Yes. And just a reminder to just call exhibits, let's number them as we proceed.
Certainly. What I'm presented on the screen currently is from the cover sheet from the plan set that was submitted. It's Casey and Keller area map. It's sheet number one with the date of March 12, 2021. And basically, just want to orient us to the location of the property, the zone in which we're in, and some of the surrounding uses and how this plays into the master plan's goals and objectives for this area. As I stated earlier, the property in question, excuse me, is tax lot four and block 704. It's located on the northern side of Melbourne Avenue, approximately 240 feet east of Home Street. It's a through lot, which means it also has frontage on Essex Street on the north end of the property. As I stated earlier, the lot area is 9,342 square feet, which is about 0.21 acres in size. It's a relatively small lot, has a frontage on both Essex Street and Melbourne Avenue of about 50 feet, and has an average lot depth of 186 feet. It is located in the B4 Central Business District. And some of the surrounding uses is a Chase Bank immediately to the west. There's the newly constructed mixed-use building. It's a two-story building with retail and offices on the first floor and apartments above. To the north is Essex Street and New Jersey Transit Rail with the train station just to the northwest of the site. Along Melbourne Avenue, we have the Halpert Building immediately to the south with a number of commercial uses. There's the post office a little further to the west, and to the east is the RO zone along Melbourne Avenue. Moving on to.
Mr. Lanza Fama, let's mark that as exhibit A1, and this next exhibit that you're putting up, we mark that A2, and can you tell us what that is?
Okay, both of these are part of what was submitted, Mr. Buzak. You want to mark them anyway?
Yes, we'll mark.
Okay. So what was what was marked as A1 was the area map prepared by Casey and Keller, sheet number one in the set of plans dated March 12, 2021. A2 is the title and topographic survey prepared by my office under my signature, sheet number two in the set of plans, also with the date of March 12, 2021. And what is the orientation of this of this particular exhibit, which is the existing condition map of the property, is that north is to your left, Melbourne Avenue is on the right, Rowley Place at the intersection, and Essex Street to the north. You can see that the existing building occupies basically from sideline to sideline, fronting on Melbourne Avenue directly. The existing structure has an area of 3,816 square feet. It's a one-story concrete block and stucco building. To the rear of the building is an existing parking lot with approximately 13 parking spaces. But the parking area is not in accordance with your ordinance standards. It is angled park. There is a deficiency in the width of the aisles and some of the striping. There's also an existing monument sign that is located off of Essex Street. We'll talk about that in a little while. As I stated earlier, in response to Mr. Steinberg's question, you have a high elevation at the northeast corner of the site of about elevation 108 and elevation 103 down towards Melbourne Avenue. So you're looking at about a five-foot grade differential, five to six-foot grade differential across the overall length of the property. The parking lot slopes in to a dry well that is located in the central portion of the site. This dry well also takes roof water from the building as well as the paved parking area. Utilities are available from Melbourne Avenue. There's water coming into the building, gas, sanitary sewer connection is provided out towards the existing sanitary sewer that exists within Melbourne Avenue. There's no vegetation on the site. There's no existing trees or shrubs for along either property line. There's a retaining wall that exists along the Chase Bank property line. And access to the site is solely from Essex Street. There is no direct vehicular access to Melbourne Avenue. Moving on to what we are proposing here at this location, went the wrong way. What I'm referring to now is the, and we will call it sheet eight, this is A3. This is the site plan drawing. And this is sheet number three, again with the same date of March 12, 2021. And what this depicts is the improvements that we are proposing to not only the building, but the parking lot itself. The building is being expanded by approximately 400 square feet to allow for creation of the residential lobby, as well as to provide for access into the first floor retail space. Two stories will be constructed above this building. Mr. Buckholz will get into the details of how that's being accomplished because basically, the existing structure is being retained, and we literally need to elevate and support an entire new building above that. And it's going to require some reinforcing and some special measures taken with regard to the existing roof structure. And partially, that is the reason for the height variance that we are seeking. We are proposing to reconfigure the parking lot in such a manner to create 10 parking spaces that are fully compliant with the town standard of a nine-foot width, 19-foot deep. There is a two-foot vehicular overhang that's available for the vehicles. So there'll be more than adequate room for them to maneuver in and out of the site. We're providing a single handicap parking stall as required by ADA. And we're also providing an electrical vehicle electric vehicle charging station immediately adjacent to that handicap stall. We're proposing two LED-type lighting fixtures that would illuminate that area and provide for a uniform lighting level in the parking area. Access to the site would still be maintained off of Essex Street. However, we will be shifting the curb cut slightly so that the vehicles parked along the eastern edge of the property would have the appropriate backup and can allow access in a safe and efficient manner. There'll be a stop sign and a stop bar proposed at the driveway. I know Ms. Callahan had requested that we provide some additional markings on the pavement to indicate that it's a left-turn movement, because as we all know, Essex Street is a one-way from east to west. So we'll be providing some signage that indicates no right turn, as well as a painted arrow on the asphalt indicating that a left-turn movement is required here. We've also provided a line of sight which is clear and open. There's an existing monument sign that was approved as part of the project to our east. And the line of sight clears that, so it's not an encumbrance. We are taking an existing monument sign that is is on the site. It's located further out into the parking area. We want to move that against the retaining wall that exists on the west side of the property. But we also want to shift it closer to the right-of-way line of Essex Street so that we can get better visibility as traffic moves from east to west along Essex Street. This ground graphic will require a variance for its relocation, and we'll we'll get into that shortly. So the the overall project, when we look at the zoning table, you can see that there is basically the increase in building coverage is is just over 300 square feet overall. The total lot coverage is unchanged at 9,342 square feet. We're asking for a building height variance. What's permitted in the ordinance is 40 feet. We're proposing 42.73 feet as measured from the average grade. In Mr. Phillips's review memo, he talks about a discrepancy between the architectural plans and the engineering plans indicating two different heights. On Mr. Buckholz's plan, he's measuring the height, or he's indicating the height on the plan from the front door on Melbourne Avenue to the highest point of the roof, which is slightly higher than this. But under your ordinance, we have to measure the height of the building from the average grade plane. And so that is the the difference between what's indicated here on my on my zoning table and within Mr. Buckholz's architectural plans. Three stories are being proposed and are permitted. The parking that's required would be 28 spaces, and that's based upon the proposal of a certain amount of retail. I'd just like to point out that there is a typo with regard to the first floor retail space. That number should actually be 3,657 square feet. The reason I bring that up is because we had included the residential lobby in the retail space when we prepared the application. So technically, that is not correct. And it it kind of balances out because you still end up with requiring 27.1 parking spaces, which still rounds up to 28 parking spaces. So it doesn't change the extent of the variance. It's just a technical aspect that I wanted to correct. We're providing two parking spaces for the two-bedroom apartments. There's storage in the basement. We're providing 0.8 cars for that. So the the total comes out to 28 cars required. We're providing 10 parking spaces under the ordinance. We're also seeking a variance from providing a loading space. No loading space has ever existed at the site in all the years it's been in operation. We will explain that shortly on how that's accomplished within the existing parking area and how that doesn't pose a problem for our operation. So let's let's talk a little bit about the operation and the loading area and accessibility to the site. The ownership has indicated to me that they have two full-time employees, actually, excuse me, four full-time employees five days a week, and the business operates from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM. They also have one part-time employee that works during that timeframe. On Saturdays, it's the same time period, 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM. They have three employees on on site that would work the retail space. And on Sundays, they're open from noon to 5:00 PM, and they typically have two employees. They receive deliveries of product, of shoes every day, five days a week via UPS. And the way that's delivered is in a typical UPS van. There's no tractor trailers that come to the site. And basically, the UPS delivery driver comes in. And because it's about 11 o'clock in the morning that they make those deliveries, they're able to make a turn onsite and pull out towards Essex Street. It's a typical van-type delivery truck. It's a typical van type delivery truck that makes those deliveries. They also have an internet service that they provide. People can order shoes online and get them shipped directly to them. So there is a UPS truck that comes in the evening around four or five o'clock that for about five or 10 minutes picks up that, the outgoing product and, and delivers it from the site. So the wider driveway area that we're able to produce with the 19-foot deep stalls with the two-foot overhang, from a practical perspective, this, this driveway area is probably going to be over 28 feet in width that's available. So even if a truck were to pull up alongside, they're typically six and a half to seven feet wide. That's still more than enough room for vehicles to maneuver in and out of the space for the five or 10 minutes that the truck is there. With regard to trash pickup, there's going to be a trash area within the building that would be accessible from the parking lot. So, and this is the way the trash is picked up currently. Trash is picked up by a private carding firm. It comes on, I believe it's Thursdays and Saturdays that they make their pickups. They do it early in the morning and the garbage trucks literally back into position, pick up the waste and then pull back out onto Essex Street. And that would be continued in, for the, the expanded facility. We don't see any issues with that. The parking variance that we're seeking, it, it sounds extensive, but when you go back to, let's go back to the area map and the neighborhood that's around us. If you look at the site, the first thing that you, that jump out, jumps out at you is the fact that it's in such close proximity to the train station. So that allows for a consideration and the reduction in the required number of parking spaces under the residential site improvement standards. In addition, there are approximately 21 on-street parking spaces available along Milburn Avenue. There's additional spaces available along Essex Street. There's approximately 10 permit parking spaces that are located on the north side of Essex. And I believe there's approximately another 10-metered spaces located along the south side of Essex Street. The clientele that comes into the building typically come in the front door and utilize the on-street parking. Very rarely do they traverse back to Essex Street and park in the parking lot. Now, based, this is based upon information provided to us by the operators of the facility. So in my mind, this allowing and granting this variance allows us to develop the property in such a way that's consistent with many of the goals and the objectives of your master plan. Objective 1.02 in the master plan talks about promote the appropriate mix of development in downtown and other commercial areas. The concept of providing residential elements to a commercial zone have long been known in planning as a way to revitalize a downtown area. And, and again, in objective 4.03, it says leverage opportunities for new commercial development or redevelopment of existing properties where appropriate. And in 4.04, it talks about strengthen existing business centers, including the downtown core, upper Milburn Avenue, Short Hills Train Station, Morris Turnpike and Kennedy Parkway and other business areas. And also, when you look at the, the master plan's recommendations for the B4 Central Business District. One of these, one of the things that they talk about is encouraging residential development in the downtown to make it more vibrant by putting additional feet on the ground and to provide more housing choices, particularly for young people and seniors. So I, I think under those, that guidance from master plan, I think that's very strong positive criteria to grant a variance for parking in this particular case as well as the lack of a loading zone. I think the operation here could support it. You're, you're looking at a maximum of five employees. You have 10 available parking spaces. So you have at least four spaces available to each of the apartments. So in my mind, the onsite parking could easily support the addition of these four residential two-bedroom units, especially in light of the fact of the train station being readily available to the site. The, the other variance that we want to talk about and is something that is, is very important is the height variance. As we had indicated earlier, the building height that's, that's proposed. What happened to my plan, there we go. The building height that's being proposed is 42.73 feet, whereas 40 feet is permitted. And again, this is a unique scenario. It's not like we're building from scratch. We're not building, we're not tearing down the existing building and starting from scratch. We're working with the existing structure. And you'll, you'll hear the architect speak about this after, after I'm done with my testimony. And the fact that the structure has to be high enough to be supported properly above the existing building. In addition, you want to have floor-to-ceiling heights that are appropriate and enough space to provide for a fire suppression system, which is being proposed throughout this building. There's no fire suppression in the building now. We're proposing it in not only the retail space, but in all the residential floors as well. So in my mind, that is certainly a rationale to grant a variance of approximately 6%, 6.8% over what is permitted. You're, you're allowed to go up to 10% before triggering a D variance. And in this case, you're looking at a C variance. And in my mind, this would be a C2 variance that the benefits of providing the fire suppression system and retaining the existing structure are, are strong elements in allowing for the building to be higher than what is permitted. Finally, there is an existing sign that is located off of Essex Street and I do have a photograph somewhere. Where do my photographs go? Bring that down. There we go. This is the existing footnote sign that exists at the site. Mr. Buzak, this would be, we're up to A5 or 4? You're, you're muted, Ed. A4, what A4 is, is a photograph of the existing Footnotes ground sign that currently exists at the site. This sign is eight foot, eight inches high. It has a surface area of approximately 30 square feet. It is six feet wide, excuse me, six foot, six inches wide by six foot high. It's a little bit irregular in its, in its, in its shape. It is, it is set up on two bollards and there's two bollards out to protect, protect it. Under the zoning ordinance, a ground graphic is permitted on any property where, especially where the building is setback greater than 35 feet. Clearly here, that's the case, the building setback over 100 feet from Essex Street. And we have our driveway access at that location. The graphic is greater than what is permitted under the ordinance. Under the ordinance, you're allowed 20 square feet. So that is an existing non-conforming condition. And the setback requirement is the greater of 10 feet or one and a half times the height of the sign. Since the height of the sign is eight foot, eight inches, that computes out to be a 13-foot setback. Currently, it's setback 10 feet from the Essex Street right-of-way and nine feet from the property line with the Chase Bank. Our proposal is to move the sign to within two feet of the street right-of-way and within two feet of the the property line to the west. So we're looking for variances for the size of the sign, to retain the size of the sign. We're looking for variances for setback to the street as well as setback to the property line. The obvious benefit here is the ability to identify the site. It's a, it's a safety issue for motorists to be able to quickly and easily identify the site and its location. This footnote sign has been here for literally decades. And we would like to retain the sign, but we would like to move it into a location that makes it more visible from Essex Street. It would not be impeding the driveway on the Chase Bank since that driveway that's located that you see immediately behind the sign where the guide rail is, is, I believe it was a, a one-way in, but it may be one-way in and out. But it is, it would be in a location that would clear the site triangle and not encumber the line of sight of vehicles entering or exiting into the Chase Bank driveway that is immediately adjacent to us. So again, in, in my mind, this is a C2 request in the form of a variance. The traffic safety issues are important. The need to identify the location is important. And I would like the board to grant this request for the reasons cited. All of the variances that we talked about, the loading, the, the number of parking spaces, the height of the building, the sign in my mind does not have any substantial detriment to the public good or the intent and purpose of your ordinance as I cite it in, in the, from the master plan, the goals and objectives, as well as some of the recommendations within the master plan for the B4 Central Business District. I think we're consistent with those goals and objectives. And when we're talking about the building height, I didn't mention that the one element where recommendations that they're making is they talk about raising the height above the three stories in targeted locations to allow multifamily residential mixed-use buildings within close proximity to the Milburn Train Station. So the, the fact that we're slightly over the 40 feet, I, I think can be justified. I don't, I don't see a significant departure from those goals and objectives and recommendations cited in the master plan and, and what we're proposing. As far as we have review memos from both engineering and, and planning, I have no issues with any of the items or recommendations requested by Ms. Callahan in her memo dated June 25th, 2021. We will comply with all of the requests contained within her memo. In Mr. Phillips' memo, I believe I've addressed his request to provide the appropriate proofs for the variances we're seeking. I believe I've explained the difference between the 42.73 on my plan and the 43.84 indicated on Mr. Buckholz's plan. We've indicated that there's handicap parking on the site. Accessibility to the site is from the rear of the building. John will talk to you a little bit about how that operates within the building, how there's elevator in the building to allow for access to the upper floors and the fire suppression system that's being proposed. I believe I've addressed item six on page three of Mr. Phillips's memo regarding the sign, the ground sign. And we've outlined both the existing condition as well as how we're relocating it and the variances that would trigger. I believe we've talked about the garbage and, and loading operations. And Mr. Buckholtz, we do have colorized renderings from both Milburn Avenue and Essex Street. But I don't want to steal John's thunder and we'll let him present that to you when it's his turn to testify. So I, I believe that's kind of a summation of where we are. I think the proposal is definitely a good one. And that because of the, the narrow nature of the site and the limited area we have to work with, I, I think we're, we're making a very efficient use of this property. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Lanzapama. I'm sure we have a few questions from the board. I see Mr. Bear first, go ahead.
Thank you, Matt. Michael, could you put up the site plan, say three, I think it was. The question with respect to the sightlines on picture would have been okay.
There we go. Okay, this is the site plan, this is sheet three.
That works, that's fine. So one of the questions I had was with the, the variance you're asking for, for relocating the sign. Let's talk a little bit about the sightline for the vehicle that would be exiting the Chase Bank building onto Essex Street. And you're going to be moving that sign to two feet from, from the right-of-way. Okay, so explain to me how that doesn't create a sightline issue for that vehicle who is exiting northbound. Your arrow is backwards. Northbound onto Essex from the, from the Chase Bank site, that's a one-way northbound. And how is that vehicle going to see the vehicle exiting, I mean, exiting the, the, your site with the relocation of that sign?
The motorists would, would be located right about where my, my little hand is here, the marker is here. So they would be able to see through this area. If we, we currently are showing it two feet back, we could slide it back a little further, maybe even four or five feet to make sure that we have an adequate sightline. You could see the monument sign on the neighboring property that was approved, that's basically right up against the right-of-way. You can see how our line of sight clears that sufficiently. And I believe we'll have that same clearance at, at the location of the Chase driveway. And I, I could have swore that this was a, a one-way driveway coming in off Essex.
Yeah, yeah, because they got my money, so I gotta go there.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, that's right, there is a sign, there's an oh-left turn sign.
Go to your picture, you'll see the stop sign, it's one way northbound. So if you guys, if there was an opportunity to slide that sign back, I think it would create a better situation for the vehicle that's exiting and turning left onto Essex Street from the Chase Bank. I would have, I would think there would be some possible sightline issues if it was or so, something to think about as part of the app.
We will, we will amend the location of the sign to ensure that we have, have adequate sightlines.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Raise an issue here, I know Mr. Bear has talked about the sign and I was going to raise that issue. I, I didn't see anything in the application dealing with the variance that they saw. And while I don't have, I have the actual notice, I have a formal notice that they have. There was no indication that there was a variance, a sign variance is now being sought, so did I miss something?
No, we, we did. We, we thought since it was an existing sign that we wouldn't need the variance. And then we realized later on that we probably do. And Mr. Phillips confirmed that in his memo. That we probably do and Mr. Phillips confirmed that in his memo. So we were basing. That on the the catchall phrase that was incorporated into the notice. Any and all variances that the board may deem necessary.
Okay, although the board's not deeming this necessary, right, you 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 have elected to. Move the sign from its current location, which I I acknowledge. I believe I acknowledge is a is a nonconforming location to begin with.
Correct.
First, I thought you were seeking a variance to legitimize that location. So it would stay there if somehow it were destroyed or whatever.
Right.
But you're actually relocating it, which is beyond that. I I I need to give that some thought because while. Many interpretations of that catchall language. And you know, they vary from. If it comes up at the at the hearing. That the applicant did not know about before the hearing. To something caused by the board itself during the course of the hearing. And if the board, for example, said to you. You know, you need to move that sign. Let's say it were located where it is shown on the plan now and Mr. Bear made the comment. That he made and you said, well, I want to move that sign. But I need a variance for that. There's certainly an interpretation that the catchall phrase covers that because that was something that was generated by the board's. Comments, you know, here you've acknowledged that it it was just missed and I I have some concerns about how far that. Omnibus language goes, so. Let me leave it at that at this point, the the. The alternatives are. That you withdraw that variance and keep the sign where it is and apply separately for that at some future time. That you run the risk that, you know, the variance could be challenged because there was inadequate notice. Or the board decides that they're not going to grant it because of that reason, so. Let me leave it at that, but I do, I did want to raise that concern. As early as I could here, so thank you.
Ed, before we leave that, do Mr. Lanzafama or Mr. Stewart, do you guys want to? Do you want us to take a moment so you can confer for a pause? Or do you have a response?
I I think that might be appreciated. Rich, would you take a minute?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, thank you, so why don't we do, it's nine oh five, why don't we come back in five minutes, we can, there we go. We can take a break and let's come back in five minutes, please, if that's okay?
Thank you.
Thank you all. Hello. Um, thank you for raising that point. Um, I don't know if you've had any further thoughts as you've digested, but I look forward to hearing what the applicant. Feels as appropriate, but yes, if there's a potential noticing problem, that's something that needs to be raised, so. Okay, I'm not seeing our applicant and team yet, but. Thank you all for returning promptly. Hey, we're just waiting on the return of our applicant team.
Okay. Okay, guys, all right, thanks.
Hi there, Mr. Stewart, welcome back.
Hi, thank you. So so we have discussed the issue with the with the owner. And we feel that the prudent course of action would be to withdraw the the sign from the application at this time. And in the future, come back with an application for for a new sign. At at a location that's obviously acceptable to the board.
Okay, thank you, so to that end, we will not be. Approving any signage in this proposal. And we will just be hearing the application, assuming the signage to be determined at a later date.
There there is the signage on the building that is compliant.
It's just this one sign.
Just the the freestanding ground sign that currently exists. If the application is approved, our our client will remove it from the site. And if they desire to have a sign, which most likely they will, they'll come back to the board at a later date. With a new sign, new location.
Great, thank you, so the sign would be removed under the current proposal, okay, Mr. Steinberg, do you have a question?
I have a question for the witness.
Okay, but Joe, 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 I'm gonna have you hold for one moment for Mr. Buzak, I apologize.
I just want to make it clear that in case, I I didn't want my comments to be misinterpreted. The sign is in a preexisting nonconforming sign, there is no requirement that that sign be removed. So that sign can remain at that location, adding an item unless it's destroyed. So I I didn't want anyone to. Interpret what I said as meaning that because it is nonconforming, it's got to be removed or it needs a variance, it can stay where it is. If you want to move it, you need to move it to a conforming location. At your at your discretion. And if it's not going to be a conforming location, then you need to apply a variant slightly to the Board of Adjustment because the. This board, assumedly this application would be over by then. And it would just be a Board of Adjustment fault variance, so I I I don't want the board to to. Move forward or there would be nothing in the resolution that will require you to remove the sign, the sign will be there, if you want to remove it, that's strictly up to you. But there certainly can be no requirement that this board imposes, thank you.
Hey, I appreciate that, Mr. Buzak. The the point that I'd like to bring to the attention is that. The the sign in its current location and the bollards that protect it would be in the driveway area. And would not work with our parking configuration, so we would have to remove it to to have an efficient driveway access and parking arrangement.
Understood, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you, now, Mr. Steinberg, go ahead, I apologize, thanks for holding up.
That's fine, I have a question of Mr. Lanzafama. You stated in your summary. That you thought that you had handled. The discrepancy between the building height. Of forty three point eighty four feet. And forty two point seventy three feet. If you did, I missed it.
Okay, let me, let me. I'll be happy to explain it again. Certainly, the elevation, the height indicated on Mr. Buckholz's architectural plan. And I could, I can be happy to bring that up. Let's go to. This is the plan that. Paul Phillips was looking at and questioning. The height that's indicated on Mr. Buckholz's plan. Is from the street grade on Melbourne Avenue. To the highest point of the roof, which is the parapet. And that's forty three feet, ten inches in decimals, it's forty three point eight three feet. However, as you know, building height in in Melbourne is measured from the average grade plane. Taken ten feet, ten foot increments around the perimeter of the foundation. So when you do that calculation and determine what the average grade plane is, it's above the grade of Melbourne Avenue. Because the back area of the building is at a higher elevation. So when you do that calculation from the average grade plane to that same parapet is forty two point seven three feet.
Are you, you've advertised and your notice. Provides for the larger of of the two numbers, correct?
I I don't recall what was in the notice, but.
I'm looking at the.
It is the larger.
It was attached to the application and it says forty three point eighty four feet.
So my my testimony is that that is not the height we're seeking under the ordinance. The height we're seeking under the ordinance is forty two point seven three feet. Does does that answer your question, Mr. Steinberg?
Yes, it does.
Great, thank you, okay, I will call on Trini next and then I see guest on as well.
Hi, Mr. Lanzafama, just a quick question on as it relates to the parking. And I'm sorry if I've missed this, but it's a two parter. The first is, I I thought I heard you say that, you know. You you will put a stop sign just to make sure that, you know, pedestrian safety is sort of. Kept in mind, is there any other thing that you're proposing, like is is there going to be a warning sign or a flash, you know, just like something? Sound related, because of, I mean, I've driven out from the Chase. Branch myself and I've always felt that, you know, more could be, more could be have done for pedestrian safety there. That's number one, and then number two is, you know, is just as it relates to residence parking. Is it going to be gated or is is there going to be any other barrier there just to sort of keep? Resident parking in mind and the the security and safety of resident parking in mind, I mean, that being, you know, feels like. I I I don't know if I missed this or not, but is there any other precaution which? You guys are taking there for the building to to ensure. Safety.
You're you're talking about. Safety of the residents that.
Both.
Live there.
Both, yeah, I mean.
In in what way, you're talking about? There there's no fencing proposed.
No fencing, okay.
Not, it's not a gated area, just just like the parking lot immediately to our east for that building, it's wide open. There's, it's not. It's not a situation where you have a vehicle exiting a garage, for example. As we had on the V I application, in this particular case, it's a wide open area. Pedestrians are clearly visible to the motorists and the motorists are clearly. Pedestrians are clearly visible to the motorists, and the motorists are clearly visible to the pedestrians. We do propose to indicate at the stop bar coming out to Essex Street that we're gonna have a stop sign, a no-right-turn indicator, as well as a curved arrow on the pavement, as requested by Ms. Callahan in her memorandum. So we are gonna comply with that. But I don't believe anything else is warranted in that particular location.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. I saw Gaston next, and then Joe will come to you.
Mr. Lanza Fama, you had mentioned that the building height was due to structure and also some type of fire suppression piping. Is there any way you can go into more detail on that and maybe show us on the drawing where all the piping and the reason why it's not, why we need extra structure to make the building work?
Let me go. I'm going to refer to Mr. Buckholz's drawing, which is Sheet A2 with the date of June 14, 2021. This was prepared by Mr. Buckholz, and he'll elaborate on this a little bit. But what I'd like to point to or bring to your attention is the existing, this is the existing Footnotes building and their roof structure. And you could see the structure that's required, the steel and reinforcing that's required to support the upper floor levels. And we do like to have some ceiling heights that are warranted for these types of units. They make for a more comfortable space to have a nine-foot-six minimum clear height. But you could also see the structure that's proposed between the floors that result in that, that overage in the structure. And you can see it's to the parapet. And we're only talking about two foot, nine inches approximately that it's over. But this is some of the structural elements that are needed to basically build this building, the two stories of apartments on top of the existing building.
Let's mark this A5, Mr. Lanza Fama.
Okay.
Already, so you don't need to do that anymore.
Does that help?
Yep. I'll have a follow-up of that. But now the fire suppression, how does the fire suppression affect the height?
Well, you're gonna have a sprinkler system with the heads. You gotta run the piping networks in the subfloor systems to allow for those heads to eject the water into the residential units. So it doesn't add significantly to the height. It's more about the structure itself and getting it. But I thought it was an important element to consider in developing the overall building and making it clear that there is some benefit to the added height.
Okay, okay. But we're looking for why it must be. Like, right now, it looks to me like the 10-foot ceiling heights are what is driving the overage. Right? Because my house doesn't have 10-foot ceilings. Right? Nine and?
These are nine-six at the back end.
Yeah, so, but that looks like a false ceiling there as well?
Yes, and this is the structure that supports the floor above.
Okay, so, in all honesty, you actually reduce the height of the building just by bringing the ceiling heights down by a foot?
Correct, you could, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, Joe, back to you.
I just want to understand something here. Assume for a moment that of the maximum four employees in the store, that two of them drive and park where they park now behind the building. That leaves eight parking spaces for four units. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And to your reference, you said in your testimony that the parking variance that you're seeking would be, I don't remember the word you used. It wasn't enormous, but it was something like that.
Substantial.
Pardon me?
Substantial, perhaps? Is that the word?
Maybe, it was more than, it was more than substantial. Let me put it that way, but I don't remember the word. We can watch the tape and find out what the word is. But you then referenced the train station. Is that your assumption that a party in a two, that parties in a two-bedroom unit would not have any cars because they would be using the trains? Is that your assumption?
It's not an assumption, it's a fact. What we found in studies done by traffic engineers, the Institute of Traffic Engineers, as well as the Residential Site Improvement Standards, have an adjustment for the required number of parking spaces in more urban areas, areas where mass transportation is readily available. We found that the parking demand for two-bedroom units could be as low as 1.25 cars per unit. So you're looking at.
And where do we find this study?
Residential, in the Residential Site Improvement Standards, as well as several studies that have been done by the Institute of Traffic Engineers with regard to apartment parking in more urban areas. Many municipalities have much lower parking requirements. Numbers like 1.25 cars is not unusual in this type of.
But not, but not Milburn, is that correct?
Well, it's in this type of area where you're located immediately.
But not Milburn.
What do you mean by not Milburn? Milburn is a community that has a train station, and people live in and park and.
But the Milburn ordinance has not been amended to take.
No, that's not what I'm saying. I'm not, I'm not saying that the Milburn ordinance has been amended. That's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is that the reality, what the reality is with regard to the parking demand at this location. The reality is that many of the renters at this location will have only one car because they want to move to this location because of its proximity to the train station. And we see that time and time again in many areas where.
Didn't you also state in your testimony that the applicant was looking to elderly as well?
I didn't say that, no.
I think you did.
Oh, oh, no. What I was reading from, what I was reading from was your master plan and the recommendations in the master plan. What I had read, I believe, what you're referring to might have been some of the goals and the objectives in the master plan with regard to redevelopment in the area. I don't, see, I don't, I can't find it at this moment, but that's where, that's where I was reading from.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Lanza Fama, just follow-up question for me on the parking, and then Maggie, I'll go to you next.
Sure.
Are you labeling or proposing to label the parking spaces?
Yes, we would assign four parking spaces to the residential apartments.
And what about for the building?
For the retail space, no. That would be first-come, first-served between employees and potential customers. However, what we've experienced at the property, Footnotes has been in operation for literally decades, and very few customers park in the rear. Many of the customers utilize the Milburn Avenue on-street parking that's readily available. There's over 21 parking spaces available along that section of Milburn Avenue. So we felt that that would be the parking source for the potential customers to the building.
Okay, so there is no consideration of having employees park elsewhere to allow some onsite spots for customers?
We could potentially have some of the employees park off-site in some of the public parking areas that are available to them.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that consideration. I guess we'll have to circle up as a board and see where we land on that. But I'll allow Ms. McGinn's.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Michael. I have a question in regards to, I have a few questions. But in regards to the trash pickup, you said it's private carting on Thursdays and Saturdays. Now, is that outside the building or inside the building?
The storage, there's an area in the back section of the building that's gonna be screened off, and that's where the refuse will be stored. I think that's on the building elevations. If you take a look at Mr. Buckholz's drawings, I believe it's shown on his plans. And then the trucks would back in, they'd access the gate, take the refuse out, dump it in the truck and leave, close the gate, so.
Okay, so that means it's out, so I guess that means it's outside. Thank you. And then as far as move in and move out, that seems to be a problem. You're gonna have four apartments. Where are these trucks going when people are moving in and out of apartments? How does that work?
Certainly. It's a two-bedroom apartment. It's not a huge apartment. Typically, it's the type of U-Haul vans that you see. It's not gonna be an over-the-road tractor-trailer that's gonna move these people in. And again, these vehicles could park in the parking stalls that are provided and be able to negotiate the driveway because we have an oversized driveway. Our driveway is nearly 28 feet wide.
So yours, and of course, how many square feet are each apartment?
I'd have to check and take a look at Mr. Buckholz's plan. I don't know the exact square footage, but they're typical two-bedroom apartments.
1,500 square feet?
1,500, yeah.
Probably the size of my house. So we used a bigger thing than a U-Haul to move my, moving in and out of my house. I think a U-Haul is quite small.
You have a basement and an attic. This doesn't.
He's not sworn.
But yeah, Mr. Buckholz, please don't. Thank you.
Well, I just, I have to disagree with. That's all. I don't think people are using U-Hauls in and out. Also, thank you. Also, in terms of the parking, if you're, if you are, and I'll get to that. If you're saying that you're allocating one spot for each two-bedroom apartment, and then there's four full-time employees, that's eight spots taken up. There's only four in front of the building. I realize they go down the street. But historically, because of this traffic pattern, most people, if they can park in front of the store itself, will go back around and go around Essex and circle back to park in their park. So I think that the 10 parking spots seems pretty light for four two-bedroom apartments in addition to the retail piece. And I do have a bit of a concern with the movement of people moving in and out and trucks. That's all. Thank you.
Well, just to be clear, you have 21 parking spaces in between homes and Essex on both sides of the street. And if people don't find a spot there, they can circle around back to Essex. There's an additional 10 parking spots on the south side of Essex that are metered. The 10 spots on the north side of Essex are actually permit parking, business employee permit parking. That's available. And if they, the employees chose to buy those permits, they would be able to park in those areas. So you do have an extensive amount of on-street parking readily available. And I think the master plan took that into account when they thought about putting apartments above the retail uses. And this is a great opportunity to revitalize your downtown area. And as it says in the master plan, put feet on the ground, put pedestrians in that area. And I think, don't get hung up on the fact that someone may have to drive around the block to find a parking spot. I think the benefits here certainly outweigh any detriments that might be perceived.
I can appreciate that. Many of our retailers do complain, though, about the parking in the downtown and the lack of it. That's all.
Well, we have that huge parking garage, too, that is underutilized.
Okay, thank you. Maggie, I don't want to cut you off. Did you have any additional questions? Okay.
If you have one question, I do have one question, and maybe someone can answer this for me. As I was looking at the application, it says the owner is Bruce Hausman, and that's 92.5% of ownership. Who's the other 7.5%?
I can't answer that question.
Okay, maybe Mr. Stewart could answer that for me, please?
I don't think I have that. I know that we just require to notify of anybody having 10% or more. So I'm not sure. That would be less than 10%.
It would be, but it still would be nice to know, sir.
Yeah, and if I had the information, I would let you know, but I don't think I do. But we do.
Maybe you could have a.
Hausman is here. He may be able to answer that question.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Jorge?
Yeah, so, Mr. Lanza Fama, I have to say that I disagree with you about the use of cars because the study that you are saying is about urban areas. And they are talking about urban areas like Jersey City, Hoboken, where there is really a mass transportation. And if you live around here, or if you use mass transportation here, the mass transportation here is only the train. And if you don't have a car on the weekends, you are stuck here. So I'm not too sure if I agree with you. But anyway, what I want to say, what happened if people, as you said, that are only one car, a couple living in those apartments, and they have only one car, but the other one wants to bike? Do you have any bike parking in this building?
Oh, bicycles?
Bicycle. We don't offer for car, we can offer for biking, right?
I believe there are some availability for some storage area. There's nothing specific outside. We could put a bike rack outside to provide for people that might want to bike to the facility. That can certainly be accommodated. There's nothing shown right now, but we could do that, certainly.
Can we add that? So like a.
Absolutely.
Okay, second question. And can you?
Jorge, you have to talk towards us. I'm sorry.
No, he can put on the screen the drawing number three.
Number three. Okay, this is the site plan drawing. Is that the one?
Yeah, exactly. I want to ask you this. So I see here the parking spaces are 19 feet deep, right? Nine by 19. And then you have in front of the parking 27.7, something like that. I cannot.
27.7 feet.
What is the minimum required by code? Is 27?
24. 24.
24. Could we have, I know this is 100% a lot covered. Can we have a three-feet-deer green space?
Well, what we thought was really beneficial here was the wider driveway allowed for movement of vehicles in and out, especially things like the garbage truck and the UPS delivery. So we felt that that was really important. And that extra width goes a long way. That extra four feet makes a huge difference in getting that vehicle in and out of the site.
And if we have, sorry, but if we have there in those four feet rain garden, where all the water from this pavement goes, don't you think that it would be?
We're taking, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Jorge.
I was gonna say, don't you think that it would be very beneficial for the environment?
The design right now is to take 100% of the water from the roof and the parking lot and putting it back into the ground, the design we have now. So I don't see the difference between creating a strip of land that is relatively narrow, and you're not gonna be able to plant much of anything in because it's too narrow. I think the concept of putting it in dry wells and allowing it to recharge achieves the same goal in a slightly different way. And you get the benefit of having a wider driveway that facilitates movement of vehicles in and out of the site more effectively.
Okay, so let's keep talking about the parking. So one of the things that we are talking in the town is to do more freely for pedestrian people to walk around town. And actually, that's what you also are saying about the lack of parking. So do you think that people like to walk along a parking lot? It would be better if we can do a screen there and people don't see the parking inside. Something to make this more friendly for pedestrians to want. I know what is around there, but those are existing conditions, and I hope someday it will change. But now we are changing this side, so I think it would be great if we can do something to hide the cars and to make this more pedestrian-friendly.
Um, there's, there's not, there's no room for planting, obviously. Um, hey, there's, there's not, there's, there's no room for planting, obviously. When you're walking along Milburn Avenue, the building itself screens, screens out.
Essex Street.
But if you're walking along Essex Street, well, you're not just seeing this parking lot, you're seeing the parking lot of the newly constructed building to the east. That's wide open as well and always has been when it was the, we, we call it the old.
No, I understand that.
The old IHOP building.
I understand. That's what, what.
And I understand, but there's, there's, there's a minimal amount of screening you could do along the streetscape because of the narrow nature of this lot and the need to have, you know, the driveway opening appropriate. There's not much that you're going to screen. There's not much benefit that you're going to gain. And you also want to make sure that you keep, keep open your, your site triangle lines so that vehicles exiting the site can clearly see vehicles coming from the east along Essex Street.
Well, I have to say, I not, I agree with that because we can have a nice green wall. We can have something nice for pedestrian.
Maybe, maybe I'm misunderstanding your, what your question is.
I would say, I think, let me right here, what I'm saying along these walk there to make this nicer for people to walk. Nobody likes to walk along a parking lot. Nobody.
Right, right. But you, but you only have, we, we only have a small area here to work with. This is driveway opening.
Yeah, but I, I don't know. I'm not the, I, I'm not going to design this for you guys, but I enjoy the, the.
No, no, I.
Things that you can do, you, the architect, whatever, something nicer for people to walk along here. I know we have those situations here in this parking lot here. But we are trying to improve our town and maybe something that we can do. The other thing about that is also the lack of trees. Any way that we can start planting trees in the, at least on Essex? I understand nobody likes to put trees. Because they cover the commercial space, whatever, but at least in the back sometimes.
We, we might be able to get a tree, a street tree, if, if assuming the, the municipality or this Essex in this section is actually a county road, we'd have to get approval from the county to plant a tree in that area. We can certainly make the request to the county. We might be able to plant a single tree, perhaps in, in this area here. We do have some overhead wires we got to deal with and a pole, but I, but we might be able to get something here. What I'm concerned about again is the sight lines of the vehicle. But if it's a high branch shade tree, we, we might be able to accomplish that.
But it's something that you may work with. It's something that you may work with the forester of our town, right?
Sure. We could, we could work with him.
And it's something that you can see, that's something for the facade, not facade, for that screening of the parking is something that is. I have to say, I like the building. I feel that this is important to bring to our town. Talk about mixed use building here and in fields. So I'm not against this. I, I feel that it's great. I just feel that we can improve it. You are asking for a huge variance that is the lack of parking. So I'm asking you, in, in exchange, can you do something better for the environment? Like maybe a green roof, permeable parkings, something that to benefit our town.
I, I, I understand your request. We're, we're limited as to what we could do. The, the only way that we'd be able to create some type of planting area in that corner would be to eliminate a parking space or perhaps reduce the width of the parking stalls to, for example, eight and a half feet or, or eight foot nine inches to, to pick up some, some land area that along Essex Street that would allow us to plant a hedge and a shade tree, for example. We can certainly take a look at that possibility. The.
Yeah.
The, the loss of a car though, might not be the best answer. However, we do have sufficient parking, as I said, in the area around us in my mind. So that, that might be something to consider by the board if they wish to grant us an additional one car variance request to allow for some landscaping and screening of the parking area along Essex Street.
Or maybe, as you said, to reduce to eight foot six, the width of those parking stalls.
Correct.
Okay, thank you, Jorge. Mark, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Beth. I'd like to, like, just, you know, add at least Jorge's suggestion. We might actually, you might actually look at planters. You know, there are, there are real, you've seen some real creative ways, I'm sure, where municipalities and townships use planters on streets and in parking lots, and they come in all sizes. Some of them will support small shade trees, others basically shrubbery and, you know, and flowers. And it basically does add an aesthetic appeal to an otherwise, you know, concrete landscape and something you might consider.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Thank you. Other questions for Mr. Alonso Fama from the board? Before I go to the public? Okay. Not seeing any. At this time, I'll ask members of the public if you have questions for Mr. Alonso Fama. So this is not a time to make comments on the application as a whole, but if you have any questions for Mr. Alonso Fama on the testimony he provided, you can use the raise hand function in Zoom and we could bring you in at this time. Not seeing any. Okay. Thank you. And I think that's it for, from our board questions for Mr. Alonso Fama at this time.
Thank you. I do have an answer to the ownership question if you'd like to, to hear it.
Sure.
So, so the other owner is Mr. Hausman's sister, Wendy Gutkin, and she owns 7.5%.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay. At this time, I'd like to call the project architect, John Buckholz.
From the testimony you're about to give tonight, sharing to be the truth told, true done by the truth?
Yes, I do.
Your name for the record.
John Buckholz, B as in boy, U C, two Hs, O L Z.
And Mr. Buckholz, can you briefly describe to the board your professional educational background?
Sure. Graduated with a Bachelor of Architecture from Pratt Institute in 1979, became licensed architect in 1982. I've been, I've had my own firm for 35 years. I've been the president of Buckholz Architects. I'm a lead AP architect, I'm a certified interior designer, I'm licensed in five states. All my licenses are up to date. I've appeared before probably 100 boards throughout the state and many, many times here in Milburn over the years.
Thank you. I would ask that the board recognize Mr. Buckholz.
Thank you. We're happy to have you back, Mr. Buckholz.
Thank you. It's good to be, be back. I think a lot of the things I had to say have already kind of come out through Michael's testimony. So I kind of get the easy part. I think Michael's been handling some of the drawings. Michael, can we bring up the A1? Which basically, I think we, we skipped the A, my A2 is exhibit A5, I believe. And so this is A6 then?
That is correct.
Okay. So this drawing, A1, it's up on the screen, is the same drawing that the board has. Nothing's been changed or doctored. The drawing is dated June 14th, 2021. It's A1. The top drawings are the two upper floors, the second and third floor. The lower is the ground floor, which shows the parking lot in the back. And if we can just zoom in a little bit, Michael, on the right, Milburn Avenue, currently the store entrance is on that side, the main entrance, double doors. And this is an open kind of retail space. It, it's been retail there. They, they have storage in a partial basement downstairs. And they also have just a small office in which they just run down and they can just do a little backup on the weekends. But basically their cash wrap is in the front and their space is existing today. The area to the back is going to have a brand new elevator that will go the three stories. There is in a lobby, a residential lobby in the back in which you kind of, from the easterly side, there's double doors. There'll be a little waiting area, seating area. There'll be a staircase that goes up through the entire building. And then we also provide a residential storage. I think that's where we can put the bikes if the board, you know, if we find that people are, are willing to bike and go there, that would be a place where we could put the bicycles. So in that location, we can, we can open it up a little bit more, put the bicycles in there and maybe a couple of snow shovels and a little bit of sand, sand or things for the snow. But we can certainly get bicycles in that location. To the lower level is the, it would be the entrance to the retail store in which the employees can come in. The occasional, I guess, person that, customer can come in the back, come straight into the store. And we've also provided an ADA lift for ADA accessibility from the back also so that everyone has ADA complacency, both for the store as well as for the apartments up above. And it, they're balanced, so the entrances are split to the east is the residential entrance and to the west is the retail entrance. Directly between all of that, we've provided areas for garbage, areas for recycling, and then areas for the exterior utilities in which the gas and electric. We only have four units and then we have the store. So we're talking about five gas meters and five electric. So there is, you know, it's, it's not a large complex. It'll easily fit in these areas. We've, we've put doors on them, they're gates. We, when we get to the elevations, we've kind of put like a wood look to it. We really don't do too much wood on buildings anymore. We do things that look like wood. They become either metal strips or they become elements that are materials that are insect protected, long lasting, non-maintenance kind of materials. So on the very bottom, this is an elevation. I guess we've, this is the north facing elevation. Ed?
Mark is A7.
So yes, A7, the northerly elevation of the building facing Essex Street. So to the right in this building is the Chase Building, as you can see, which is the actual Chase Building. You can see the retaining wall that resides on the right hand or westerly side. We're putting a glass facade so you can see into the shoe store. There is signage which is permitted. This is on the face of the streets. It will conform, it will confirm, both sides will conform to the two foot height requirement. And it'll, when it comes time, we will make these conforming. To the left, we've just kind of named it 275 East Apartments. That'll be the entrance guiding people over to the apartments. And then, as you can see, that is a staircase when I get to the plans. The, the center portion of this building is the staircase. So the lower side is, is the first landing. You come up to the left, that's the, that's, you know, the next landing. And it goes all the way up. The apartments are split right down the middle, left and, left and right. In this rendering is the building that has currently went up in the last two years. As Michael called it, the old IHOP building. Hopefully this improved the area from what was there before. So not that we're trying to make it a sister building, but we're, 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 we're trying to use things that, you know, look, look similar, a little bit of vernacular that, that plays off each other. But you can see sort of the level change that's here and what the back of the building will look like for these two entrances. Michael, if we could go back to the A1. And I know it's getting late, so I'm going to try to go through these, these floor plans. Michael, if we can go to the top area, the proposed second floor is pretty much identical to the third floor. So what's going to happen is in the back of the building, just to the north, we have a fire rated fire stair that sits in the back, which will take you vertically through, through the building and will exit down on the first floor through a common lobby for, for the, just only for the residential, the handicapped elevator, as we talked about. So there's an A and B unit on both floors. There's windows flanking both the common hallway, so there's lots of light coming in there. So you enter into a foyer. There's mechanical rooms that will be hidden inside the units. These will have laundry areas. They are two bedroom apartments. There is one in the back with, with a bathroom. There is a home office in the middle. Everyone seems to have home offices. This, this might be, even though it's very close to the train station, this certainly, people seem to be doing more home offices. So we felt as though this would be appropriate. There is no window in this home office. It cannot be a legal bed, bedroom. It has no window. It can't have a window. It sits on the property line. So we cannot, we can put a window if it, if we're fully two armed fire rated. But the building next to it is very close and someone can build right up and next to it. The space immediately to the right is the master bathroom with a couple of closets. And this side happens to be a little bit longer because the front, front facade runs with the angle of the building. So this is a much bigger bedroom. Immediately to the front, we have these apartments and in city living, we like to give these balconies so that people can kind of get out in, in, in front. And you have a window or, or we're still deciding if it's a window or a door from the bedroom out to the balcony. There'll be sliders from the living room out to the small balcony so that you can come outside, see the sunrise. The sun comes over. These are the, you know, we've got this so that the, the sun will rise high. The south side is Milburn Avenue. So we'll have some sun coming in, but mostly shade because it's the highest that's in the sky right there. You'll see the, the sunrise to the, to, to the top of the page and to see the sunset to, to the bottom side of the page. So we've got a nice sized living room, open dining room and a modern kitchen to the center area. And I'm sure Maggie can see all of these things in her head right now. So that's, that's the apartment. These are roughly 1,500 square foot apartments. It is four, two per floor. They're basically identical. On this floor in the back, there's a, these, there's a roof area that's on the back. We are, we are not doing rooftop. These are just going to be simple roofs that sit there. They're, they're, they're just covering the areas, the first floor areas that are there. And basically, the area that the apartments reside in and part of the roofs and part of the common hallway sit on top of the existing building. So this floor plate, Michael, if we jump to the third floor, you'll see is the exact same floor plate. It, it's just, it runs up. It just, it just comes to the same. You just don't really see the roofs in the back because they're down a level. So you're going to be able to see Washington Point out the back. The, these two bedrooms will have beautiful views of the mountain. The light comes into the common hallway in the back and the stairwell would be lit with windows that bring light into the back. So those, those are the floor plans. If I can, I'd like to jump to A2, my A2, your A5 exhibit. This drawing is dated June 14th, 2021, same as the first one. This is, and Michael's going to just blow down a little bit. This is the Milburn Avenue proposed side. The bottom area of the building is, is where the existing building is. Now that, that building, actually, the facade that's there today rises up to the top of the balcony railings in the front. So we'll be, there's a bulkhead on this building. So the Footnotes building looks very grand, very tall. But they've raised the parapet wall up on this building and it's, it's got to be six or seven feet higher than the existing roof. So we'll be lowering that so that the Footnotes portion of the building will have the stone around the, 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 the top and the sides. It'll be a different color, a little, a little darker shade and maybe a lighter gray. We've been playing with that. And then there's a, this kind of a square around the balcony that we've kind of highlighted that you'll see in the, in the, in the rendering that goes around those balconies to kind of highlight the center of the building to make it very light and that, that stone. to make it very light and that, that stone will run into those balconies. And then we're, we've got, we've got open railings that you can see through. The windows in the back are set back, so from the street, the face of the building will have these openings, so it's less massive. Because it is a three story building, which is not a large building. We have four story buildings throughout town. We even have a five story building in town. And then we've, we're using the brick on the bedrooms. And, um, we're, we're using that to kind of show where the bedrooms are. They're going to be energy efficient, double hung windows. There, they've got casements and middle sections. Those are casements that open up, they'll have screens. The lower pieces of glass are spandrel glass and the upper pieces, um, will be, um, clear glass to let the sun in. They more than likely will have some sort of film or shading on these pieces of glass. So they'll look a little bit darker because I've got to stop the sun from coming into those windows directly. We've also, um, on the very front of the building, Mike Scott, is, there is a, a canopy right above the glass to the store. What happens, this is the south side. So this is going to be, um, a, a black, um, a Mape's canopy is more of an aluminum canopy that comes out. And what it's, what it's intended to do is to shade very specifically the glass for the shoe store. So that, uh, when that sun comes down, um, we're not roasting the high heels in the windows. So the intention is, is to keep that sun off of, um, Bruce has been very well known for the high quality shoes that he sells. He does display them and we'd like to not have them fade when they, um, sit in the window. So there is a, um, a shade, a solar shade at that level to shade those windows on, on that area. And as I said, the windows for the apartments that are on the balcony sit back, so all of those windows sit in the shade. Michael, if we could go left. We kind of talked about the Essex Street side. Same thing again, we're kind of using the same vernacular that's on the bedroom side. So you can see those two areas to the left and right have the same windows as the fronts. So you clearly, when you see the building, um, that those are where the bedrooms are and the staircase is right up the middle. So, yeah, we've actually drawn in the staircase how it traverses inside the building. So you can see why the windows are, are not all lined up in that area because they're lining up with every time you come to a landing, you can look outside. So every time you hit that transition and you make the turn, you can see the mountain. So it's going to bring a tremendous amount of light in there and, and bring it through. We also show the gate, the gates that are on the, um, the, the utilities, the trash and the recycling. There is a door all the way over to the left and that is a service door for the shoe store. They have a partial basement downstairs, so the intention is, is when they bring product in, they're going to bring that product in, in that door, which can come down. It, it hits a landing, which would be at the level of the store. And then it can continue to go down into the stockroom that's in the lower level. And that's, that's pretty much what, what the rear elevation, um, looks like, which we saw in the rendering. Michael, the section of the building, which I can answer some of the questions that guest don't brought up, is, is our, sorry, Mike, it's the, it's the top side, um, is but part, part of the problem we're having with this building is that we're trying to leave the existing structure in place without destroying the entire interior of this building. What we are looking to do is we're going to support these upper floors. This, this building is built out of masonry concrete block. So we're going to look to put some of the supports of the second floor onto these, to these blocks. We're going to add, we, you can see we've got some column lines on this building. We're going to add some auxiliary structure to help support these upper floors. I did not design the first building. I wasn't here for the construction of the first building. I don't like to sit on bill, on, on existing walls for all of my supports. So, um, we'll, we'll slide in some existing structure into the existing space. And between the two of them, they will, they will sit on these, um, you know, on, on this existing store. So the backside are the, are the, are the vertical circulation elements in, in the, uh, in terms of the staircase, the hallway and the elevator shaft. So all of that is how you get into the units, how you vertically rise and come through the building. We have not designed the structure of this building. Part of, part of the thing that we're trying to do is I've got a center line bearing wall. I've got two outside walls, so I've got certain spans that I have to span in these buildings and come to those three points. So I've got structure that I've got to pull across. I also have to provide a one hour, a one hour fire rating. This will be a fully sprinkled building. But I need to have the first floor slab to be fire rated in order to separate the two uses. The, the gray used down below and the, and the sort of white uses that are up above, just not shaded areas up above the, in the units. The structure that we put in will be of a certain size when they go in there. Part of the thing that I have to do is I will now have, I'm leaving the existing roof and we'll leave probably the membrane roof on there. So if anything were to ever leak from pipes from the apartments, that roof will still be in service for, for decades. So I need to provide some space within that roof that God forbid, I have to get into that space because the bathroom's leaking underneath. I have to provide what will cause arguably a crawl space so that a plumber, maybe a, a medium sized plumber can get himself through that space and be able to service that first floor level or the, or the second floor where the apartments are. So I, I, we've, we've estimated what that space is and it's a very conservative. I mean, or it's a very, you know, we've been, you know, we're being very careful of what that is and we think that we've solved it. We've gone to the ten foot because this is what most apartments are going to. When you see apartment buildings coming in, the eight foot, yeah, and I know we all live in eight foot high, you know, uh, houses and different things. If you look at everything that's being built from, um, you know, houses down in Florida that are tract houses, they're twelve foot, ten foot high ceilings. Any, any of these houses that you're seeing going up or apartments that are going up, they are, they are nine foot six, ten foot high ceilings. So we are leaving a little bit of space in that until I get the ductwork designed. We've done this before. We've just made it very, very tight and we are sprinkling this whole building. So within that space between that floor, the second floor and third floor, I had to get ductwork through there. I had to get water, waste lines and sprinkle lines all missing each other. So again, it's still, it's not a very big space. And then when we come to the top floor, I also have the slope of the roof. So when you get to the very front, I have no parapet whatsoever, um, in the very front. Because that's what I need to, um, if I go to the very back and I've got my ceiling, which is at nine foot six, I, and I run the pitch of a quarter inch per foot, which is the bare minimum on a typical roof. And I come to that front point, I have zero parapet in the very front of the building. Because, you know, I can still come to this board going to the, the, you know, nine percent of the requirement. I, you know, asking you for this variance. So we didn't ask for the nine percent. We pulled it down a little bit to have a little bit of play so that I can get this all in here. If I'm off three inches because of a roof or a structure, you know, it's still going to come out of these ten foot high ceilings. I may not end up with a full ten foot. I'm hoping that I can at least get nine foot eight or, or something of that nature. So we've taken a good guess of how big these need to be. But it's the utilities and the things that have to go in here. So we're, we're, we're trying to say, we didn't take advantage. If I could have really made this fall into the forty feet, if I were designing this new, I could put a lower ceiling. I could go to a twelve foot ceiling, which might be, you know, uh, you know, and that's to the deck. And then, and then put a ceiling in there where I can get the ductwork and things in there. So because we are leaving this, it just made us, you know, jump this up a couple more feet. So I'm hoping that the board can see that we, we tried to keep it to the bare minimum that we could. But we didn't want to get caught short by, by jamming it in so tight that I couldn't get the sizes that we were looking for. And we really are trying to make this. I, I, you know, I applaud the town and the board. Uh, we finally have three stories in this town. And there's an opportunity to make, uh, uh, these nice buildings. So, um, I think those are the things, um, I just want to make sure I hit bicycles. Also, I just for Maggie, um, we can also write into the leases. You can only move into this building, in and out of this building on Sundays when, um, there's no one really in the parking lot. They've got limited usage of the building. And I think one of the things that Michael, you know, could hit on, just remember when this store is closed, suddenly the whole parking lot opens up and the people upstairs can park in all the spaces. I mean, you can park an EV at night if you wanted to, um, without charging. Bruce would just have to have some sort of an agreement with the people upstairs and saying, if you want to park in those other spaces, you need to be out by, um, I believe Bruce's, um, place opens at ten. And hopefully by then, these people have, you know, are on their way to work. So we do have some sort of synergy between the two, um, going that way. As Michael said, it is a fully sprinkled building. It's required by code, so it's going to improve. You know, a building that's not, you know, fire protected. So this is going to improve the site. You, you don't have fire protection now. The other thing, someone had mentioned about the roof. Everything that we're doing here is a new roof. There is nothing existing except for the roof that I'm hiding. So I'm, no one's going to care about the black roof that I've just encapsulated in the building. But so the latest thing that we got before COVID, when I was going to these, is that the architects are now going towards black roofs again in the northeast. Basically, we're trying to remove the heat from roofs. And now we're finding that if you, you know, we used to insulate roofs at the top of the Joyce in a building. And, you know, the originally we put them up with the top of the roof, then we went to Joyce. Now we're back at the upper, upper part of the roof. Architects are now going away from white roofs in the northeast because they want the heat to come into the building and keep it warmer in the winters. So we are more than happy to pick whatever color the board wishes. Other than some select colors of red or green, we are more than happy to go black or white and, and provide that to the board. I believe I've hit all of the comments. I believe that some of the members had.
Apologies, I was muted. Thank you. Are you, you're completed with yours? What, Mr. Lanza Fama, hang on, let, let's, let Mr. Booze echo and then let you go.
I don't think we marked this exhibit that you just put up at the end.
And you are correct. Sorry about that.
And that's a rendering, obviously.
That is a rendering, yes.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, uh, Mr. Lanza Fama.
That, well, that's what I was going to say, Ed, was that we didn't mark this yet.
Thank you both. I appreciate it. Okay, questions from, um, the board on, uh, for Mr. Buckles, uh, Jorge, go ahead.
No, well, I, I want to go back to the bike storage. And I know a little about bikes. And I can tell you that in that storage, you can fit only two bikes. And we are talking about, you are asking for a variance for, I don't know how many parking spots. And the idea, if you don't provide parking for two parking spot for each unit, at least provide two bikes for each unit will be eight, at least eight bikes. And in that, uh, place, in that room, it will never fit eight bikes. So maybe it's a very easy solution. It's just to put some bike tracks, uh, racks outside. And I, I hope that owners of, or, uh, the renter who live here, they will not put the bikes in the balconies in front, because I see that in many buildings, when, when they don't have a biking areas, they put the bikes in the balconies and that will make very bad, but the, the view of this building. So we, what we are trying to do is to improve, of course, the quality of our town. And if we provide a nice way to park your bikes and easy, people will buy more, will walk more and they use less cars. So I would like if you can pre, uh, work maybe with the staff from planning, um, and from the town, where to store those bikes. So that's one. Now, the green roof, eh, not the green roof, the roof, actually, I wanted to say the green roof. You said to, between white, black, um, if we want to be good with environment, the best way to do it will be a green roof. Not green because it's color green, green because it's a planted roof. So that will help a lot the inside apartment because that will be a great, great way to insulate at least the two apartments on the top. So I will laugh, also for the two little roof that you see from the, that you were very clear, that that's not a roof deck. It would be very nice to have even those little two roof to be a green roof. Because also will help for, you have one hundred percent lot coverage. It will help to absorb some water and keep the water on those green roof. So that's some suggestion that I would like in exchange of your variance. You're asking for, for, I think the ten cars or something like that. I don't remember the number. The, the tankers is, uh, the lack of ten spots is a big, big variance. So I think it would be nice if you can do something for the environment and for the town and to improve these two, these two situation that is mostly for the architect. Yes, that's one, yes, exactly. That's one of the, uh, ground, uh, one of the, yeah.
Okay, thank you, Jorge. Thank you. Other questions for, um, Mr. Buckles? Mark, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I had a, a couple of questions. It seems like you're doing some good things related to energy efficiency. Would you, um, consider basically seeking a leads, at least a lead silver designation? That's my first question.
The, the owner hasn't and I don't think we are going to. I can, Mark, what I can do is sit down with them and go through it. I, I am a lead AP architect. I, I, one of the things I didn't say is that we want to, you know, we will specify low VOC paints, energy star appliances and equipment. What we do, well, I usually do recycled contents and the finishes. We'll do a higher energy SEER ratings on the HVAC and we'll, we'll use low E double paint glass. We just, right, right now, I would say to you, we're probably going to, the spike in cost for materials is so high. And until that's, that comes down, I, I can tell you right now, we're doing no green buildings right now. Even PNC has stopped doing green right now because the cost to afford these buildings is out of control right now. And I will tell you, Mark, I came before this board a couple of months ago for a urgent care. So I can tell you from that building, we, we talked about that, that space for the EV. So based on that, we went heads in on that, you know, upfront. Of thinking that was a, a, a good green portion of that. So we believe that that, you know, is, is one of the things that we think is good. I just, to go full green or some green right now, uh, we're, we're calling it the greening. We're just not going for a certification.
It would, I appreciate if you can at least look into it because as you know, the return on investment on a lead building is a couple of orders of magnitude of a non-lead building and you'll make that back.
I, I can certainly have the conversations with them, absolutely.
Great, thanks. Can I ask a couple more questions?
Sure, go ahead.
You know, uh, the, the second one is I, I'd like you to try to achieve at least if possible, a ten percent EV, you know, parking space, which would be what, two point eight spots? Can you add one more EV station?
My, my, you know, again, it goes back to almost the same conversation we had in a previous application. We have very limited parking in this location. And we are providing the single one. It's just, it would, what we find is when you provide EVs, people don't park there. They just, it's like handicap spaces we have to have. And you see these handicap spaces just sit vacant. I mean, basically handicap space, some of the, some of the, the handicap space goes vacant ninety-two percent of the time of its life. So now you put in two EV stations, you've got almost one third of our parking spaces sitting vacant. sitting vacants, potentially ninety percent of the time. Until, until we get cars past sixty percent or seventy percent EVs, this EV station will probably sit vacant, for ninety-five percent of the time for the next five years.
I would disagree based on the dearth of EV stations we have in town and the demand for.
I'm, I'm taking the classes right now. I am now taking classes of how to design EV for Ford, and, and, and Chevy stations. And the, the numbers are, are very difficult in terms of getting people to use these things, particularly in shopping centers. And this is a very small store. Unless your wife is parked here for two hours buying shoes, which we all want to be careful about, although Bruce would like it, is that you're never really not in a shoe store for an hour. You're not in a rest, you know, in a restaurant, you could be there for two hours getting a nice charge. In this store, you might be in here for twenty minutes. You're not, you're not getting a substantial charge. And, um, the other thing I'm learning is to get a four sixty volt charger in any location, is nearly impossible with utilities without bringing in huge transformers. So the best we can get here is a two seventy-seven. And even with a, um, with a Tesla, that's still not a lot of miles.
Okay, thank you. Um, and Mark, did you have any last question before we?
Just one more. I would encourage you, if you're not going to go with, we'll call it that great shade of Jorge green, you know, which is sort of a nice idea, a green roof. White is definitively more, um, en- environmentally conscious, especially given the significant amount of heat island, impacts that we have in the downtown. Um, and we're looking more at reducing energy demand and heat island impacts, which would be the summer months. So I would basically go with white over a black roof if you're not going to do a green roof. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, Maggie, go ahead.
Hi, thank you so much. Hey, John, how are you this evening? Um, I had a couple of questions for you. Do you, where are these AC units going? Did I miss that?
Um, I don't have a roof plan, so in, in, they're split systems, Maggie. So part of the unit is in the, is in the unit, which was next to the laundry room.
Sure.
And then the compressors will be on the roof dead center. So probably, um, Michael, if we could go, yeah, to this, do you see next to the laundry room, there's a mechanical closet? So we're, we're, we're gonna put them, we're, we're, we're gonna move them, over the kitchens. So if you look at where they are, they're gonna be, you know, from the back, the elevator will screen them. You won't see them. And they're so far back from Milburn Avenue, you won't see them. So they'll probably be right above either laundry room or the kitchen. And then again, there's only four and potentially two for the first floor, um, store.
Where are the first floor stores now?
They're, they're, they're on the, on the roof that's on.
On the existing roof now? Okay, terrific.
And, and we would put new energy efficient ones for the store up, up top.
Okay, cool. So that's that. Um, do you know, um, and I think, by the way, it's laudable of you wanting people to move in and out on a Sunday, but you know, usually leases run, uh, for a year. So it's hard to kind of get somebody to move on a Sunday if, if it doesn't fall on the last day of a month. So I think that's kind of difficult, um, in terms of move in and move out dates. Um, do you know, I'm just curious, just based on showing your building and the building next door, do you know the difference in height? You're, you're looking for a variance of almost forty-four feet. Do you know how, what the size of the building is next door? Which that building as well has four apartments in it. Um, it's on a third of an acre, two one bedrooms and two two bedrooms, and the two, two bedrooms are already rented. Um, and I think they've got more parking than what you're allocating on your building.
Yes, yes.
Do you know what the difference is in height?
I, I don't know exactly, Maggie. I, i- it's an entire floor.
Yeah, okay.
And, and I do, I do have the higher ceilings in that building.
Right. Did you, were you, you did that other building?
Yeah, it looks the same, doesn't it?
No, but from the front, it doesn't.
Yeah, no, no, I, yeah, Maggie, I, I guess, I, I did do that one. Yes.
Yeah. And then, I don't know, um, we're, we're all been talking about balconies a lot lately. Um, and you, you refer to it as city living. I'd like to remind everybody, this is still the suburbs in Milburn. Um, so I don't know if there's something we do about those balconies, as it were, because it is a big concern if there's a lack of storage. What's gonna wind up on those buildings?
You, you can put in the lease that you cannot store on those, on those, and you can enforce that.
Okay, okay. That's all I've got. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Um, we are dawning on ten thirty, but if we are nearly wrapping up, I would propose that we continue, this application. Um, I believe there's nobody else providing any additional testimony. Is that correct, Mr. Stewart?
It is correct.
Okay, thank you. Um, okay, Maggie, you see your hand up, but is that, is that was, that was previous? Okay, great. Um, anybody else have questions for Mr. Buckles? Uh, Jorge?
Yeah, last, last question, and that's very easy. We, as, eh, we're here here, we are trying to improve energy efficiency in, in our town. And one of the things that I was looking at your plans is like, you have a forty feet deep living room, living dining kitchen space, which forty feet is more than what many building codes are allowed for light and ventilation. So you have forty feet plus the balcony, which adds three, four, five feet, whatever is that distance. So is eh, there any way that you can, eh, or even the home office that is dark? So it means that whoever is working there, they have to turn on the light twenty-four hours. So is there any way that you can add skylight and, and/or sun tunnel to go to the second floor? So we can bring natural light to all these units, and people doesn't require so much of, eh, to your energy?
I, I'm, I'm gonna assume what you're looking at is just the home offices. So I can put, um, there, there is some nicer glass block that comes with a two-hour fire rating. So I can, we used it on the building next door. So what we can do is we could put some glass block in there, and that will bring in the energy, and a glass block is insulated. And it's also.
Yeah, the problem that once they, they build something next door, eh, either the tenants will complain that they don't want to have a, another building next to they had, or they will block the light. So that's, I was talking about something coming from the.
I, it, it's gonna take space from the other, and I, I've used the so, you know, the solar tubes. We can take a look at them. Um, they, uh, it's, sometimes these are, these home offices become the theaters. You know, it's, it's where you watch TV. Um, we, we see home off, you know, this is a multi kind of functional, um, but I can always close the blinds on the glass block. I, I just can't open, I just can't open the windows. I, I need to keep them, keep them closed for the fire rating.
Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions? Okay, great. Uh, Mr. Lanza Fama, you can unshare. Thank you. Do any members of the public have questions at this time for Mr. Buckles, uh, regarding the testimony he just provided? Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Stewart, anything further? Or before I go to, um, comments from the public?
Nothing further. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Do any members of the public have any testimony that they would like to be sworn in and make regarding any, comments on the application as a whole? At this time, use the raise hand function. Okay, great. Hearing none. Thank you. Okay, um, Mr. Stewart, I turn it back to you if there were any, responses from anything you've heard today that you wanted to address or anything, um, that you wanted to conclude?
Uh, yeah, no, no responses. Just, um, in, in conclusion, we would ask that the board look favorably upon this application. We, we, uh, think that would be a great addition to the town.
Okay, thank you. Um, okay, um, if I could just open it up first, because I think we heard a number of, items, and Ed, I don't know if you've been taking notes along, or if, um, what the best way is to sort of summarize. I feel like we heard a number of things, or we, um, made some asks, and, um, I, I think either we asked to be considered, or, or asked, and they said they would look at it. Um, so I guess I just want to make sure we didn't have anything hanging that we didn't make a decision on, that we should be making a decision on, um, before moving forward.
Well, the items, if I might, the items that I have, um, that, that may be open, uh, relate to the bike, the bike storage. Um, the applicant has indicated that they will be able to provide bike storage in the tenant's, uh, storage area. Uh, Jorge had, had, um, indicated that, that, that is not a large enough area. Uh, they did agree, I believe, to put, to put bike racks, uh, bike rack outside, but I'm not sure about that. So I think that issue is open. And when we've asked them to consider this or that or the other thing, there's really no way that we, we can, uh, require that. You know, we can say the applicant agreed to do this, to look into this, to look into this, and all of this, but all that is somewhat meaningless. No offense to anyone intended. Um, so anyway, I think the bike rack issue is, is, um, open. Uh, I, I wasn't sure about the loading space. I, either I, I missed that or blanked out while there was testimony. Is, is there variance, because I actually had it crossed out of my notes, but I didn't remember why I crossed it out. Is there still a request for variance for the loading space for the, um, retail facility?
Yeah, yeah, yes, there is, Mr. Boozak.
Okay.
There, there, there's none existing and there's none proposed.
Okay, all right. Um, I think, eh, and, and there was a, again, the request about the additional EV charging station. Those were all, um, comments to consider, but nothing that we can, we can put in. So the only one that I have, I'm, I'm certainly, um, open to any, anything else that the answer is, is the bike rack issue or the bike storage issue. That was the one that I, I couldn't get.
Okay, thanks. First I saw Joe, and then Jorge, I see you next. So go ahead, Joe. Joe, you're muted. Joe, you're, you're muted. You have to unmute first. Okay. There we go.
I think I, I think I'm unmuted now.
Yeah.
I just want to be clear, speaking for myself, that I'm sitting here listening to a lot of testimony about EV stations and, the bicycle racks and whether the roof should be red, green, yellow, orange, purple, whatever. I just want to say that for me, I'm focused on one issue here, and it's a big issue. It's the issue of parking spaces. The ordinance says that there are twenty, am I reading this correctly, twenty-eight required and ten provided. I have never voted in all the years that I've sat on this board and on the zoning board. I have never, to my recollection, voted for a, proposal that is as exorbitant as that one. And I think this is overbuilding too many units. I understand that there are economics involved, that you can't, we have a building adds floors to it without getting a return for your money. So I think, but I think that to ask this board to, approve an application such as this is outrageous. And I'm just saying that for me, I hate to see the applicant spend a lot of time and a lot of money, answering all these other questions that have been asked of them and suggestions that they've made. Where are you gonna put the bikes? There, there, there's not enough space to put them where they testified. They want to put them, et cetera, et cetera. When there's a basic issue here, and the basic issue is whether you can, get this board to approve a twenty-eight, eh, eh, a request for providing ten parking spaces, where the ordinance says twenty-eight are required. So I just don't want my silence to indicate that I'm in favor of the, applicant going and doing a lot of, spending a lot of time and a lot of money, uh, figuring out what they're gonna do about X, Y, and Z, when there's a basic issue here. That's the only purpose of my making.
Thank you, Joe. And I recall I did actually ask, and Ed, you didn't mention it, about, um, if they would be willing to have employees, um, be required or have business purchases, um, business permit purchased for, um, so that cars for employees are not using that backlot.
You did say that. That still leads, leaves a question. Assuming that none of those parking spaces are used by employees, what is the requirement of the ordinance?
I, I don't think the ordinance.
And I don't think.
It would still be, it would still be an eighteen.
So be, that's right, it would still be eighteen.
Eighteen, sure, but four, four, four of the eighteen would be handled, at least in theory, with the building, with the business parking permits. So the, the variance arguably would be a fourteen, uh, parking space, uh, deficiency as opposed to an eighteen parking space deficiency.
Right.
Um, but, but, you know, business, eh, the, four is the maximum employees that they're gonna have at any given time. There may be less employees at other times, so there's, there's still an issue. You know, you don't, you don't.
There, there are, there are employees, there are customers, et cetera. There's an active business proposed on the front of this building. But I don't want to get involved in making a speech here. I just wanted the statement to be made, that there's a basic issue, that this board has to wrestle with, before all of these other nice little questions can be, diddled around with.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, just interject for one minute.
Sure.
Mr. Steinberg, the, the additional parking demand resulting from this application is eight cars. Yes, we have an eighteen-car variance, but that's because we're applying the parking standard to the existing retail space as well. This space has existed here for decades, with, with the same parking lot in a very inefficient, um, substandard manner.
So you're making, you're making a statement now in which you're arguing for why this board, should approve this variance.
Well, I'm just trying to put into perspective and, and make the board aware that your statement is somewhat misleading. That your statement that we need an eighteen-car parking variance because of this application is not true. We, we're adding four apartments that require eight parking spaces. That's the true extent of what this development is adding. What we're doing is trying to also legitimize the fact that, if this application doesn't go forward, you still have the same retail demand for twenty-some odd parking spaces, and you only have the ability to park ten, uh, appropriately behind the building. That's not gonna change. The only thing that changes here because of the four apartments is that you're adding eight, a di- a parking demand of eight, which I don't think is reality, as I testified, uh, that the fact that the train station being here, I think you're gonna see less of a parking demand. So I, I just want it, I, I understand your position, and I understand that, yes, it's, you're, we're asking for an eighteen-car parking variance technically, uh, eh, eh, on this application. But the reality is, the four apartments only at the maximum would, would add a parking demand in the area of eight additional spaces. That's the only comment I'd like to make.
Okay.
Beth, could I just add something?
Uh, yes.
Just also, and to say to you, I would tell you that you have a, approved projects of this magnitude. And very fortunately, with most of the restaurants that I come in with, you know, these restaurants have zero parking on them, and they come in with big parking demands. And this board has over the years, and you know, I've been there many, many years. And this board has, over the years, and you know, I've been there many, many years, almost every application I bring into this board. Has a parking requirement that cannot be met in this town. If you hold that requirement to the entire downtown. You can kiss the residential market goodbye in this town. And this is only for apartments. This is not a huge complex. It's in a great location, but you have approved very large requirements just in the. In 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 the restaurants, and I appreciate when you did do those. So the board has a history of.
That is, this is not a restaurant application.
But you've approved. Variances like this.
Okay, thank you.
And and Madam Chair, let let me just say, and I I don't want to prolong this discussion here, but. Whether the board approved them or not in the past is is simply not proofs. The board has to look at the proofs that have been offered in this. Individual case and whether the applicant has met those standards. So while this discussion has been, has been interesting regarding what the board has or hasn't done. Uh, it is irrelevant to the board's determination. The board has to, or whether or not the proofs that have been submitted tonight related to that application have met the standards in this action. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Um, Jorge, you had your hand raised earlier.
Yeah, I know, but yeah, now I want to say also about what Joe said. And I understand his concern. And but also I understand that everything is changing today. People are walking more, people owns less cars. And so that's, that's something that is changing today, and I see that in many, many different places. And I I I will prefer to have this building with four units apartment there, because that's going to bring. Life to our downtown, and these four families or whoever lives on those apartments are going to be at least four more families supporting our local business. So I I I, and I see this side, it's impossible to have more cars there. So. For that reason, that what I I want to ask and as a condition, and that was the Ed was saying, it's not just about the uh, bike parking. We were talking about trees. Along Essex, if they can review that to you to plant one, at least one tree along Essex. And to look at the screen for parking, so the parking is not visible from there, so people can feel. To walk there and feel better walking along that. And the last point, which I don't know, that's going to be, I don't. Whatever the applicant wants to do is about the green roof, the planted roof, not a color, planted roof. That was the first thing that I was mentioned. And I was mentioning before.
Okay, thank you. Um, other comments, concerns?
What did we decide about the building height, Beth? We talked about the building height, right?
Right, well, we heard testimony on on why, why it pitches up towards the, towards the Millburn Outfrontage. Um.
But it was still ten, ten-foot ceilings, because. I know that you have to buy law, put the sprinkler system in anyway, John, right? So you have to do that, but. Do you really need that much? Do the ceiling heights really need to be that high, especially compared to the building next door? That's why I was trying to see, since you did build that building. Would you happen to know what the height of that building is compared to this one, since you were the architect on it?
I I have to go look in the, in the files and just try to find it. Um, but we have the higher ceiling in the other building, is similar to this. It's probably lower. Because this existed, we we created that new. So the the difference is, that's a lower ceiling in the, in the other building, and but we do have the higher ceilings.
It just looks like it's almost a whole.
It is a whole floor. The other building's only two stories.
Stories.
Yeah, at the time, I think that's all we permitted.
Yes.
It was, we had a, I think.
I mean, was that last year? Two years ago?
Three years ago.
For that, three years ago, tw- eighteen.
It was probably twenty-eight feet, two stories, twenty-eight feet is one, or was it, was it?
Right.
I think it was only twenty-eight feet.
Yeah, it's twenty-eight feet was the.
Probably what it was in that area, maybe it was.
So instead, it would be forty, almost forty-four. Sixteen feet more.
Yeah.
That seems awfully high. Thank you.
Yep, that's okay.
Madam Chair, you you mentioned parking permits. Um, I believe you mentioned parking permits.
Yes.
Or is there a specific number that would make the board comfortable if the applicant were to purchase parking permits?
Should I open it up to members of the board? I mean, Joe, you particularly had concern about parking.
Are we, are we debating this tonight? Are we going to vote tonight?
It's possible for us to get there. I would like to at this point. Did you hear, you heard that?
Well, let let me, let me just comment, if I might, uh, in in answering Mr. Stewart's question. Typically, when the board is looking at park, business parking permits, uh, they look at the parking deficiency created as a result of the non-residential. Because these are business parking permits. Um, we we have varied in terms of of tying those to employees and tying them to the deficiency. Uh, it probably makes the most sense to tie them to employees, because you're not going to be handing. Uh, each retail customer a business parking permit to say, here, you know, go park somewhere, and here's your business parking permit. It's just not going to work that way. So. I think that we're, we're probably talking about, if I under, if I remember the testimony correctly, a maximum of four employees at any given time. So I would think that that would be the. Uh, I think that was the parameters that we were talking about. To to do more than that, I think, is is more difficult. Um. Because you don't have those, you know, recurring things. I don't think we've ever required, although I could be wrong. The purchase of parking permits for residential use. And and I I just don't recall if we ever did that. We, we may have, but. It's eluding me at this point. Maybe the board member will remember that, and I don't know how that would work in terms of proximity. I'm not familiar with the, with the parking. Garages or where those parking permits could be utilized, and whether it would make any sense to have tenants having those parking permits. Um, to be able to not utilize the spaces behind the building. Thank you.
Just a point of interest, there are ten permit parking spaces on the north side of Essex Street, right behind this property.
But if the suggestion is four, that is, that's certainly something the applicant would agree to.
Okay, thank you. Um. Yeah, I mean, I don't know where everybody stands, but I I would feel more comfortable having. Um, employees not parking there. And using employee um, parking permits, and especially if the use were to ever change, then that would um, believe still carry. So I think that's a valuable, you know, asset for our review. Okay. So. That said, the only changes, potential changes to the applicant application as it stands would be the requirement of. For business parking permits and the bicycle storage to be located, or that's already provided, or that would be amended.
The bicycle storage would be increased within the building, and we will put a bicycle rack um, to the right of the retail entry at the rear. That could accommodate probably four or five bikes.
Thank you. And when you say increased, what? I, how do we?
John had indicated that he could probably increase that room slightly. John, you want to?
There's a storage room to the left of it, Beth, so I can, I I can open that up and 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 get. B- bikes really are not that wide. I I can get a lot of bikes in a room.
Okay.
As long as you don't have the baskets on it, I can, I can get them in there. So we we've done bike rooms, so. I can go up and down.
Thank you. Those and then.
And we would make an effort to uh, provide some landscaping along Essex Street. Uh, we will consult with the county to see if they will allow a shade tree to be planted. Uh, in that area and try to um, introduce a hedge in that and and that area to help screen some of the parking from the street.
Would you be comfortable if you used a little bit stronger language instead of consult with them that if Essex County permits it, you will plant it?
Correct. That's fine.
Thank you. Uh, that's regarding a shade tree and or hedge or landscaping. Okay.
Correct.
Um, Mr. Mattson? Mark, where'd you go? Oh, there you went to the bottom. You want to unmute? No, you don't.
Apologies. Um, I was saying that if they should not, if the county says no to a street tree or. Or shrubs or whatever, can you please inquire about planters? Because some municipalities don't consider that permanent. You know, concrete planters is something more fashionable. For for street trees and.
Yeah, we could, we could incorporate, if if the county um, rejects the request for a shade tree and some hedge. Um, perhaps we could introduce a um, a planter towards the end of the parking lot. We we might have to reduce the width of the stalls slightly um, to accomplish that. Now, the fact that we have a twenty-eight-feet of backup, that would kind of lend itself to a more narrow parking stall. So if we're allowed to reduce. The parking stalls to eight-foot-six or eight-foot-nine to allow us to introduce some plantings along that edge of Essex. Um, that might be an appropriate compromise, uh, but we would require a a variance from the parking stall with, to do that.
Thank you. I I, I propose we we stay with the, the initial request of, you know, requesting from the county, the shade tree or hedge before we start. Cutting in on the width of spats unless um, we hear other testimony, but that's. I prefer not to.
I think eight-foot-six is is very standard today, that's the, especially when they have twenty-seven feet wide uh, driveway. Eight-foot-six would, I know that you see all the, our ordinance require nine feet. Most of the parking today has eight-foot-six. So I would be okay if they can reuse that in order to add some green space in the front. That would be my preference.
And and we could, we could accomplish that.
I I'm I'm just getting a little bit concerned here about the looseness, no offense to anyone intended here, but the looseness of of these kinds of things, you know. We'll change it. We're, are we going to make all the parking spaces eight-foot-six? How big is the planning area going to be, where it's going to be? Those are all things that really have to be decided. We can't just leave those issues open, uh, because then it becomes a free fall, because it was difficult for our engineer to enforce, it was difficult for for. Uh, you know, Eileen, as a zoning officer, to deal with. So. If 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 we're going to start moving around things as we're doing here, I can't put all of those things as what, as conditions in a resolution without specificity.
Then I, then I would say, we'll pick with the nine-foot-wide stalls, and we'll make every effort to get the county to allow us to introduce a hedge. Uh, and a tree uh, along the, our Essex Street frontage.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that said. Does anyone make a motion to approve this application with those aforementioned um. Stipulations?
Okay, and that would be if I, if I just might, so I would ask, I'll I'll list what I have, and if anybody has anything else, please feel free to add to it. It's a grand preliminary and final cycling approval uh, to add two stories to building in question, four apartments. Uh, granting variance, uh, height variance to um, I've based upon the way our ordinance reads. Height variance to allow forty-two-point-seven-three-foot-high building. A variance for uh, parking spaces uh, to allow for ten parking spaces as opposed to twenty-eight. A variance to not require a loading uh, space for for the retail use. Um, the conditions, in addition to the uh, standard conditions would be um, to to provide for. Uh, or to require that the applicant purchase four business parking permits for the employees on an annual basis. Um, that there be no storage on the balconies. Uh, that the applicant will revise the plans to include a bike storage area. To provide for uh. Can I say uh, at a minimum of four bicycles? Uh, because again, I just, I think you, we just need some specificity. I'll, I'll put that in unless I hear any major objection. Uh, in addition, a, a uh, a minimum for uh, four-slot bike rack in the rear. The, we'll mention the energy-saving items that uh, Mr. Buckholz testified to, and that the applicant. Will provide landscaping along Essex, including the hedge between the parking and uh, planning, provided that the county. Uh, authorizes or permits that to uh, to occur. Uh, those are the items that I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Does anybody move to approve this application?
I make the motion to approve this application.
Is anybody second? I'll second it. Thank you.
Daniel Bear?
Yes.
Gaston Halpert?
No.
Jorge Mastro Pietro?
Yes.
Mark Mattson?
No.
Maggie Miggins?
No.
Joseph Steinberg?
No.
David Morrow?
Yes.
Miriam Salerno?
Yes.
Beth Saul?
Yes.
Okay, one, two people, Carrie. Carrie's, okay.
Thank you, um.
Thank you.
Everybody's time tonight. Um, I think we're going to make a motion to adjourn our next meeting. I don't have the date in front of me. Eileen, do you have it handy? It's in August, I believe.
August, um.
Is it the fourth or the eleven? Fourth, fourth. Thank you. Our next meeting is August fourth. It will still be on Zoom, but we will be moving to back in person either. I think, I think September is, are going to be our following meeting. So. Put that on your calendars. Um, anybody make a motion to adjourn? I will make a motion. Thank you, Gaston, can second it. Eleven oh one. Good night, everybody. Sleep well.
Good evening.
Thank you.